What did I do? I told you.
Go? Okay, good to go? All right, here we go. Right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you everyone for coming. It's nice to see a full crowd at a school board meeting, especially on a nice sunny day. And during summer vacation technically. So thank you again for coming. This is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors, at the education service center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And I'll pause and ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We recognize a quorum of our board with all seven members present. Next on our agenda is approval of this agenda. It was posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Kelly, thank you. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The agenda is approved. We'll move next to one of our most favorite agenda items, which is recognitions. And so first, we have state recognition for East Boys Tennis. And Molly Hanks, our East Athletic Director, is going to walk us through this presentation.
Good evening. Erin and I are excited to be here again to celebrate yet another successful spring for our student athletes and coaches. We're going to start on the east side. As you can see, I'm going to introduce our boys head tennis coach, Seth Breidig, and he will talk to you about their season.
First, thanks to the board for having us. I've got Max Malitz right next to me, and then John Foff to his right, both a couple seniors that graduated, which we're very sad about. They are great guys. A little bit about them, they had, I don't think either of them had ever played a tennis match before they started in high school, and they lost their freshman year to COVID. They both played at some point over the last three years, three doubles, two doubles, and one doubles without any complaint. And we put them together this year after our first week, and they got better every single day, every single match. They won every match that they should have won. They competed when they were at times overmatched, and they were everything that I could have asked for. Couple fun things, they went 14 and 12 together. They were the one seed in the subsectionals. They, I enjoyed watching them play, and even some of their opponents enjoyed them. Man, it talked. They made some new best friendships with that team. They were part of a team that started a tradition where we would stop our matches during other sports national anthems. So I really actually liked that. So we would stop two times sometimes if we had a track meet and a softball game going on next to us. I was thrilled when they made the state tournament, and they lost, but they played extremely well all through the match. And even when it was getting late in the match, that they fought, and the points were excellent. And then neither one of them are huge talkers. I would be the talker of the group. I think John has a few remarks prepared, if you have time. But after state, we went to dinner, and thanks to the district, and we ended up at a supper club in Beaver Dam, where they were the youngest people by about 50 years. And it was the most enjoyable meal I've had with a group of guys. So they were just a great group, and I'm really sad to see them go. So, thank you for having us.
Right. Thank you. And now, state recognition for East Track and Field. Molly?
We're going to move to our boys track team, and I have head coach Tom Hoguster to present.
Hello, and thank you again for recognizing our athletes. In front of you, you have three of the seven that qualified for the state meet in lacrosse, actually one of the craziest state meets in lacrosse. In front of you, you have Roger Dang, and then you have Grant Laughters, and then also Warren Weber, who all qualified in the four-by-one. Missing today is Owen Carlson, who qualified in the four-by-one, Nolan DeFour, who qualified in the high jump, Logan Gregor, who qualified in the four-by-one, and also Povol, and then Alex Sparts, who also qualified in the four-by-one. The state meet was pretty unique. All the athletes that went to the state track meet, well, the coaches will probably say the same thing. Our session on Friday didn't get started until three hours after the scheduled start. We had numerous delays. We had weather delays. We had Logan Gregor, or Povol, Povolter dislocated his elbow, so there was a delay for him too. And then somebody forgot to turn off the stadium, or turn off the timer to the stadium lights at 11 o'clock. So all the stadium lights went off at one time. So these guys actually were supposed to run around 7:00 and they didn't run until 12:45 a.m. So, which is not the latest, there's some that ran at like 1:30. But again, overall, they did an amazing job. And these guys actually kept East Boys Track streak of 34 state qualifiers, or 34 years of state qualifiers in a row. So, these are the guys. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And then we will finally bring up our head girls track coach, Brett Hartman.
Hi, thank you. Again, I'll reiterate what coach, the other two coaches have said. It's great to be able to have the athletes come and get recognized for all their hard work and accomplishments. I'm Brett Hartman. This is my second year as the head coach for the girls team. Last year, we had about 30-ish girls to start off the program, and got one girl through to state, and then she graduated. And this year, kind of with the help of a lot of our returners, we upped our numbers up to about 45 at the start, and we doubled our state qualifiers to two this year. One of them is on vacation, Peyton Howard, but we have Dakota Erickson here. Peyton qualified in the 100 and 200 meter dash. She was our top sprinter kind of throughout the entire season. And then Dakota qualified in the high jump, and because she's here, I guess I can talk a little bit about, more about her specifically. Like Tom said, the state meet was very unique. In fact, in the high jump, which was one of the first field events, or first events to go, Dakota went first and cleared the height, and for a while, the board said first place in the state, so we made sure to get a picture of that. And then after the bar was moved up, as she was about to line up for her second one, is when the emergency storm system alarm started blaring on the scoreboard right above our heads. So she was all ready to go, and then had to wait an hour and a half, two hours before try to get rewarmed up and go back out into the big puddles out in front of the high jump mat area. But both she and Peyton, like all the athletes here, dealt with the situation well, performed well. They both finished quite a few spaces above their seed going into the state meet, which was great. They're both juniors, so I'm excited to have them back again next year and hopefully make it back to lacrosse. Thanks.
Erin Felber, I understand you're going to be introducing our state recognition individuals for West Track and Field.
I am, so I'm very excited to be here to have both our girls and boys teams recognized. We'll start out with our assistant coaches had to come tonight. Both of our head coaches were out of town. So we have assistant coach Sarah Kramer for the girls.
Thank you for doing this for the girls. It's a little nerve-wracking, but they, I made them sit in the front row. So, this is actually the 14th year, I was talking to Matt Wani, our head coach, that West girls have taken at least one relay team to state. And this year, we qualified two of our relay teams, as well as two individual qualifiers. We are missing a few tonight, but I'm going to take a minute and tell you about these girls and introduce them. So these girls worked hard all season, as did all of our athletes, put in some really tough practices in the beginning when Wisconsin weather doesn't always cooperate with spring sports. Jenna was reminding me of being hailed on while we were making them do their workout. But it paid off, and they made it to the state meet in lacrosse. So on our four-by-200 relay, we had freshman Riley Failing, senior Gianna Hamar, who couldn't be with us tonight, senior Gyo Lopez Havaro, who is actually already back in Spain, junior Skylar McElrid, sophomore Josie Mesa, and junior Jenna Peer. So that was our four-by-200 relay. The four-by-400 relay, which as Tom Hoguster mentioned, ran at, I don't know, 1:15 in the morning. Talk about running under the lights. They, that is made up of senior Carol Ann Bruskowitz, sophomore Sierra Beekler, freshman Riley Failing again. You're hiding behind me. Gyo was also on that four-by-400 team, Josie and Jenna. And then qualifying in the hurdles, 300 meter hurdles, we have, I'm sorry, 100 meter hurdles, we have Mel Prinsel, and 300 meter hurdles, Riley Failing. So, these girls did an awesome job.
And last, but certainly not least, we have our West Boys Track and Field team with Coach Jeff Schreiber.
We have everybody here. We never go on vacation. Thank you guys for doing this for us. I sincerely thank the board. It's really a unique thing that you, not, that you give props to these kids because they really work hard throughout the year. And so, West again had a large contingency of state qualifiers, as we have in the past, and a large group of seniors this year, guys who have been there in the past. So, some returners, it's been a lot of fun. They succeeded throughout the year. They're good kids. They've been a joy to work with. Though spending 13 weeks with them is a long time, there are a lot of personalities here, but they're great kids, smart kids, and they represent the community very well. As far as the competitors, we have Jeremy Kehoe, and he was in the four-by-800. Andrew Hartzell, and he was in the four-by-800 and four-by-400. Nathan Butters, four-by-800 and four-by-400. Carson Hammer, four-by-800. Cam McAndrews, high jump. Tyler May, four-by-800, four-by-400. Grant Walter, four-by-400, four-by-800. Zach Cannig, four-by-400. And Franklin Confera, four-by-four, 100 and 200. So, we were well represented in the relays and also the individuals. And if Frank, if you, we had you, Frank was wondering why we had him bringing these medals. They are state medals that he won. So Frank, please pull them out and show everybody your hardware. Frank? Frank took sixth in the 100 meter dash and fifth in the 200 meter dash for Division One. If you know anything about sprinting in Wisconsin, you know it's very, very, very hard to earn a sprint medal in that, in those races. So Franklin's only a junior, so next year, we hope to have him back up there. And again, thanks to all these guys, and thanks to you for giving them the notice that they deserve.
All right, sounds like those are all of our, all the individuals we're going to recognize. Well, first of all, thank you everyone for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Wow, these accomplishments. Thank you for coming and accepting this recognition. You clearly deserve it. You know, last, I believe it was at the last meeting, we recognized a number of individuals who were musicians. And I think I had commented that I played piano for 12 years. I took lessons. And I was terrible. I also went off for track, and I know this is going to be shocking, I was also terrible. But what it does do is it really, really teaches you the appreciation of when you see people who are so skilled and put in the time and the effort and the energy, you appreciate it all the more. And so hats off to you. Thank you so much again for coming, and congratulations. And lastly, raise your hand if you're seniors. I know there were a couple of seniors here, right? Congratulations to you also on graduating, and best wishes in your next endeavors, whatever they, whatever they may be. With that, we're going to pause, because this is a public meeting of the school board, and we always welcome individuals to stay for the entire meeting if they'd like. But we also know that, given that it's a beautiful weather Monday night during summer recess, you may have other plans. And so we're just going to pause. If anyone wishes to leave the meeting, we will not be offended. We'll pick up here in a couple of minutes. Thank you for coming.
It's a group of runners.
Yeah, they'll be out fast. Maybe a quick. Oops. There we go. A second, let's spread out. That's right. So to those individuals who are remaining, we've got a lot of room now in the, in the, in space in the room. So if anyone wishes to spread out, that's fine too, but why don't we get ready for our next agenda item, which is public participation, if I have that correct? Yes, it is. I have four public participation common cards, so I'll just pause to make sure there aren't any others. Not seeing others. So I will proceed by reading the public participation president's announcement. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time. The copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant common card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting, or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, and relation to the district, this information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. I'll now invite the participants forward to speak. There's a visible timer here to manage your time. I'll also alert who the next speaker is going to be, who's on deck. And to help ensure that all participants are heard and the meeting runs efficiently, please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. So with that, I will invite forward our first participant, and that is Claudia Bussi. And Jodi Geenan, you'll be on deck.
Hi, I'm Claudia Bussi.
Yes, and you indicated on your card that you're a resident of the district, is that correct?
Claudia Bussi, taxpayer in the West Bend School District.
Fantastic. The next three minutes are yours.
Okay, thank you. Back on April 24th, I discussed some excerpts from The Fifty Seven Bus, which is a book that's part of our middle school English curriculum. And I just wanted to reiterate that The Fifty Seven Bus, that you consider it be removed from the book list and curriculum in our school district. It does seem to encourage gender dysphoria, and it's filled with some terms that are sort of made up, that refer to different spectrums of gender, sexuality, and various terms of romance that are difficult to find in traditional references. I'm also here to express some concerns over another book that's called The Kite Runner, and currently that book is on our high school reading list. And last, Matt, one of the participants shared some excerpts from the book that had to do with a child rape scene. And I wish to share some excerpts that deal from The Kite Runner that pertain to cruelty and violence. And one of these excerpts comes from various pages, 268 to 272, that deal with the stoning of a man and a woman that are accused of adultery. And the stoning actually takes place during the halftime of a performance as far as a various sports competition. One of the characters, called the Tall Taleeb, picks up a rock from a pile of stones. He looks like a picture, a baseball pitcher on a mound during a game. He hurls a stone at the accused man, the blindfolded man who sits in a hole. The stone strikes the man in the head. The crowd makes a startled "oh" every time a stone hits this accused man's head. He becomes a mangled mess of blood and shredded rags. And eventually, he's declared dead, and his bloody corpse is thrown onto the back of a pickup truck to join the corpse of the accused woman. What happens at this point, the sports teams take the field and resume their second half of competition. And what concerns me is the second half for books like The Kite Runner. What does the school board and our school district do with these types of books? A book like The Kite Runner, does it expose children to a sect of Muslim faith that deals with Sharia law, an eye for an eye? Does it expose children to violence, have them accept the lack of law and order, and the lack of due process in a court? And I also wonder about the second half of the book, The Fifty Seven Bus. Is it there to expose children to more sexuality, to have them discard the truth about chromosomal gender, just simply asking the board to really look at and pursue a rating system for books, similar to the movie system that are, that we have, so that children and parents can have informed consent? Thank you.
Thank you. We invite forward Jodi Geenan, and Carol Hager will be on deck. Ms. Geenan, it's, you've indicated that you're a resident of the district, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
As a resident of this school district and a mother of three who are grown, I am concerned about the book, The Kite Runner, which is on the high school reading lists. After hearing the child rape scene being read last month, I got fired up enough to read the book myself, so I could help the school district research why this book might need to be pulled from the curriculum. I read it from cover to cover, and found that even the cover gave telltale signs that The Kite Runner was at the top of the national lists of books being challenged as not appropriate for minors for good reasons. Within the cover's endorsements were red flags such as haunting, story of fierce cruelty, vivid story that reminds us how long his people have been struggling to triumph over the forces of violence, no frills, no nonsense, just hard spare prose, and parts are raw and excruciating to read. Despite finding the book intriguing and possibly worthy of adult college-level reading, I also found it disturbing and irresponsible for our school district to offer it to minors. After all, vulnerable minds aren't fully developed until age 25. The same is true about The Fifty Seven Bus, which teaches middle school and high school students that a child can choose gender. If our school district is going to act responsibly, we can't indulge a child's fantasy that he is a cat, Superman who can leap from tall buildings, or that he'll gain too much weight if he doesn't starve himself. We would get him psychological help. A child's gender confusion shouldn't be treated any differently. Having students read The Fifty Seven Bus is psychological abuse, it is disinformation. Furthermore, our school district says it uses social-emotional learning to help students deal with issues of today and how to get along in society. Putting books on lists for English class that may trigger depression, gender dysphoria, anxiety, self-mutilation, or anger is harmful and contrary to what gains our school district hopes to make with SEL. Removing questionable books from the curriculum is not censorship any more than not using the millions of books available due to lack of time. Let's create space for better books. I will end by complimenting the efforts Superintendent Jen Wimmer and our school board seem to be making with regard to our policies on books. I attended the curriculum committee meeting last Tuesday and was pleased to hear the proposals for amending the current policies to better reflect what criteria to consider when selecting books or reviewing books we already have in case any slipped through the cracks. I am equally pleased about the link being created for our school district website for transparency in what books are being offered, appropriate warnings for those books, and links to several book review sites so families can dig deeper before giving their consent for their children to read them. I also appreciate that this will be open for the public. These are steps in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite forward Carol Hager, and on deck is Sue Callum. Hey, Ms. Hager, for the minutes, it's, your card indicates that you are a resident of the district, is that correct? Great. The next three minutes are yours.
I'm Carol Hager, and I've spoken and read lines from both The Fifty Seven Bus and The Kite Runner at several board meetings. For those of you who missed some of the profanity or vulgar descriptions in these books, check out their reviews on booklooks.org. There are other books that are inappropriate for our students, and tonight, I'll be reading a few lines from the ninth grade, fourth quarter, English One, Literature Discussion Group's reading list. Parents were asked to sign a permission slip, but no information was provided regarding the plotlines, the profanity, or the sexual content in these books. These are from a book list for English One that was offered this spring. From The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas, page 81. Fooling around isn't new for us, and when Chris slipped his hand into my shorts, I didn't think anything of it. Then he got me going, and I really wasn't thinking. And right as I was at that moment, he stopped, reached into his pocket, and pulled out a condom. He raised his eyebrows at me, silently asking for an invitation to go all the way. I left his house pissed and horny. Page 393. People hurl rocks and glass bottles at the cops. Yo, Seven says, stop throwing objects at law enforcement, the officer says. Fuck the police, fuck the police, Devonte continues to shout. I ain't scared of them, fuck the police. The profanity is indeed intense in the hate. scared of them. Fuck the police. The profanity is indeed intense in The Hate You Give. Hundred and one uses of the word ass. Ninety-seven times the F-bomb is used, and shit is used 228 times. Some lines from another book on this literature discussion book club list is Dear Martin by Nick Stone. Remember, this is for ninth grade as well. Page 118. Will you assholes turn that goddamn racket down? The guy in the suburban shouts. Assholes, Just said. How are we assholes? The guy looks like he's about to ignite. I said, turn that shit down. Maybe we should turn it down, Just says. Man, please. This is my car, Manny says. I'm done bending over backwards to appease white people. He pushes a button on the steering wheel, and the music gets louder. You worthless nigger sons of bitches, the guy shouts. I know that motherfucker didn't just say what I think he did, Manny says. Hey, fuck you, Manny, shouts out the window, giving the guy the finger. Ass is used 53 times in Dear Martin, and shit is used 40 times. Using these pieces of modern writing, and I won't call them literature, seems to be a violation of teaching standards regarding controversial subjects and issues. These books are normalizing the use of profanity and teaching our 14-year-olds how to pleasure each other. Can't we, as a district, choose books for our students that will be uplifting, artistic, and reflect our community values? Thank you.
Ms. Hager, thank you. Appreciate it. Our fourth and final speaker is Sue Kellum. We invite Sue Kellum forward. Ms. Kellum, on the card for the minutes, we have that you indicated you're a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Great. Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. I agree with what was said before me, and I didn't know that they were all going to say the same things. I am against anything that's going to be just brutal like that. I grew up in a brutal home. And if I had been reading stuff like that, that may have, I know what my head was like back then, and it may have made me think that that was normal. And my home was anything but normal. And it's just disturbing. I don't even like reading this kind of thing. The rape scene about did me in last month. But this is about The Kite Runner. The sale, oh, never mind, I can't, I'm shaky. After three days in the ICU, they withdrew the breathing tube and transferred him to a ground-level bed. I wasn't there when they moved him. I'd gone back to the hotel that night to get some sleep and ended up tossing around in bed all night. In the morning, I tried not to look at the bathtub. It was clean now. Someone had wiped off the blood, spread new mats on the floor, and scrubbed the walls. But I couldn't stop myself from sitting on its cool porcelain edge. I pictured Soha reading, filling it with warm water, saw him undressing, saw him twisting the razor handle and opening the twin safety latches on the head directions, sliding the thin blade between his thumbs and forefinger. I pictured him lowering himself into the water, lying there for a while while eyes closed. I wondered what his last thought had been as he raised the blade and brought it down. There are no words for that kind of thing. I don't know why. Maybe as an adult, but it's kind of twisted. And like she said, the social-emotional learning is really trying to better people. And this crap just can't be allowed. I'll give my rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was our last speaker. So we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have minutes of the regular board meeting from June 5, 2023. We have six contracts for approval, six resignations, no retirements, and revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through May 31, 2023. I believe that's all the content of the consent agenda. I'd move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, that motion carries. We're on to reports, and first, high school reports. And I believe Dr. Reese perhaps is going to kick us off on that one. That's at least what I have. Dr. Reese.
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight, we have the entire high school team here, and they are going to be presenting their school report for June, and it will culminate the year. It's actually, part of it is from winter into June. So, thank you.
Thank you, board, for having us here tonight. I am Jennifer Potter, the executive principal of the high school. Our administrative team, including Zach Daniels, Erin Felber, Molly Hanks, Jared Kiso, Lisa Pollan, and Susan Sarek are also here tonight to share our goals, celebrations, and next steps with the board this evening. We are missing one of our own, Laura Crozey Emrick, who is not, who is unavailable to be here tonight. Do I have to make this big, I think? So close. Let's go. How about we roll it? See how that works. As we continue to unpack the goals of our school district, the high school team would like to take time tonight to break down our cycles from the year and discuss areas we have grown in and how we will update our actions to meet the goals for next year. As a school, we have many objectives, but our top three goals shared last time with the board were to increase staff opportunities to provide input into workplace decision-making, increase students' feeling safe in the hallways, and to increase proficiency in both reading and math. Here to start us off with an update on our proficiency goals is West Assistant Principal Lisa Pollan.
The proficiency goal was by the end of the 2022-2023 school year, our ninth and 10th grade students will increase their proficiency by 5% as measured by the STAR reading and math assessments. The 5% increase goal is from the drafted district goal that reading and math proficiency will increase by 5% for three consecutive years. Each school then set their goals using that 5% incremental increase. Although the high schools did not meet the STAR assessment growth goal in the areas of reading and algebra, we did meet the growth goal for geometry. There had been a question during our previous presentation to the board about the student usage of the math lab. Students checked into the math lab 2,455 times during the 2022-2023 school year. This number does not include students that were assigned as a scheduled study hall. Next up to discuss our progress on our ACT goals is our East and West Assistant Principal Susan Sarek.
Thank you. Good evening. The ACT goal this year was to increase proficiency in ELA and math by 5%, which is a district strategic goal. This was a cohort goal based on how this year's juniors performed on the ACT Aspire as sophomores. The action steps to meet this goal were to create equal access and intentional school-wide ACT prep opportunities, including ACT prep and resource, and offering an optional ACT practice test. Right now, DPI has released preliminary ACT results. ACT provides an overall composite score. The preliminary results indicate that our students have earned a 20.2, which is above the preliminary state average of 19.3. Over the summer, DPI will be conducting validation and quality checks for state assessment data in preparation for the school and district accountability report cards that will be released in fall along with the final ACT scores. Before going over the results of the action steps, I want to go over the numbers in parentheses next to each subject area, the benchmark scores. Benchmark scores are the target scores to indicate readiness for the first year of college or career for each subject area. The data collected from the school-wide ACT prep using Methodize indicated that we scored at or above the benchmark in English and reading and slightly below in math and science. The results from the optional ACT practice test indicated that we scored at or above the benchmark in every subject except science. Overall, we had 436 juniors utilize Methodize, which almost, it's almost 90% of our junior class. Of the surveyed juniors, 62% who used Methodize regularly agreed that the lessons were helpful, and 70% felt prepared to take the ACT. Our goal for next year is to increase ACT prep participation to 100% of our 11th graders. We realize this goal is ambitious and possibly unrealistic, but ultimately, this is our goal. I will now turn it over to East Assistant Principal Zach Daniels to share the results of the staff engagement goals.
Oh, I forgot to do that.
It's all good. All right. Staff engagement goals. So we were looking to, by the end of this school year, increase staff opportunities to provide input into workplace decisions from 46 to 51%. Super happy to report that we far exceeded our goal. In fact, 84.5% of our staff felt as though they had the opportunity to provide input into workplace decisions. Couple, a lot of different aspects that kind of go into that, but what we wanted to highlight in here from our employee engagement survey that we thought helped contribute to us achieving our goal is that confidence in supervisor statements aligned with their actions rose from 68 to 90%. The staff being satisfied with quality of communication between staff and supervisors grew 20%. Supervisors resolving work-related issues in a timely manner grew from 66 to 85%. And then overall job satisfaction for staff went up from 59 to 77%. If we look at that table in the bottom right corner, the staff feedback on the behavior management process, we did survey staff three times, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and then in spring toward the end of the year, essentially saying how well did they, sorry, responding. So our behavior management process is how we report and respond to student behavioral incidences, and essentially that scale being zero, not effective, five being effective. We saw at the beginning of the survey, the average score was a 2.21, and we grew that almost a full point. So essentially, staff confidence in how we report and respond to student behaviors grew almost a full point in the survey that we deployed to staff. I'll now turn it over to Jared Kiso, Assistant Principal at West Bend West, to share an update on our safe and secure goal.
So our final goal is in the area of safe and secure, focusing on student behavior and belonging. So our goal was to increase the percentage of students that felt safe in the hallways by 5% as measured by our annual senior survey. So in the survey, students responded to the following statement. During my time at East-West High School, I felt safe in the following areas, which then listed the classroom, the hallway, parking lot, cafeterias, et cetera. Students could choose that they agree with the statement, neither agree nor disagree, and disagree. When we looked at the school-wide data, we noticed that the behavior incidences that occur in the hallway were the second highest location. Because of this, we decided to set our goal and action steps around the hallways. While we didn't reach our goal this year, we did see an increase in the percent of seniors that felt safe in the hallways, and we are pleased with that growth moving in the right direction. Since we currently only survey our seniors, we felt was important to share with you, the school-wide data, as shown in the teal graph on the right, 95.7% of our total students have zero-to-one behavioral referrals in the hallway. That means less than 5% of the students have repeatedly had an incident in the hallway. The strategies that we use this year to improve behaviors and overall student belonging are welcoming routines, clear school-wide expectations, increased strategic supervision in the hallway during the school day, especially during passing times in the hallways and the cafeteria, and timely response to behavior referrals. So if students do receive a behavior referral, there's a quick response so we can begin reteaching or involve additional intervention or support as soon as possible. I'm just going to scroll down here. One action that we're extremely proud of developing this year is creating a team of administrators and counselors that meet weekly to analyze our school-wide behavior academic and attendance data. The goal of this team is to support students and staff early when students are struggling to meet the expectations. Ultimately, we are working to reduce the number of students who receive high numbers of referrals. This graph shows that almost 85% of our students meet the school-wide expectations as measured by zero-to-one referrals, major office referrals. Next year, this team will work to continue our responses to student behaviors in order to further reduce those student referrals. Next, I'm going to introduce Erin Felber, our West Athletic Director, to discuss East and West athletics.
All right. We have so many amazing things to share with you about the world of athletics, clubs, and co-curriculars. I'll start out by sharing with you some of the highlights from East and West athletics. We had 108 East and West student athletes qualify for state. We had two state champions. We won six team conference championships, and we had 21 student athletes sign their letter of intent to compete in collegiate athletics. We also had the great honor of presenting Bob Holquist, our current weight room supervisor and former physical education teacher and coach, with the WIAA Distinguished Service Award for dedicating the past 37 years to helping our student athletes excel in the classroom and in athletics. We hosted an end-of-the-year state qualifier luncheon donated by the Texas Roadhouse. The East and West baseball teams worked together to support West alum Gwen Havorka as she continues to fight her battle against leukemia. We recently recognized our senior athletes with an end-of-the-year award ceremony, and at that ceremony, East head football coach Jeff Rondorf was recognized as the Prudence Pick Way Coach of the Year, which is voted on by all head coaches at both East and West. Both East and West athletic programs gave back to the community by hosting special nights to honor veterans, charities, teachers, parents, and guardians, and our youth programs. And we are incredibly proud of all of our student athletes and coaches, and we're looking forward to the continued success in the 23-24 school year. Next up, you'll hear about clubs and co-curriculars from East Athletic Director Molly Hanks.
This was also a very busy and exciting year for our 44 clubs and co-curricular activities. I have included some pictures that highlight the participation and engagement of all of our programs, and I'd like to share a few success stories. Our chess club not only grew in participation, but they brought home a first-place trophy at one of their tournaments this year. The Model UN team won the Outstanding Delegation Award at the 2023 conference, which was given to the top team at the conference. Our student council raised the highest dollar amount ever collected in a single school year since the inception of the charity event in 2004. Our Peers for Peers and Youth Impact Clubs teamed up to hold their first Wellness Health Fair in April, which was a great success. Our seed and model UN groups worked together to host World B Day. Our debate and forensics teams qualified for the national tournament in Kentucky in May, and we are sending one student to the NSDA National Tournament in Phoenix, Arizona this month. And finally, our Skills USA team qualified nine students for the national conference in Atlanta, Georgia, and they left today. To highlight the impact and influence that participation has on student behavior and belonging, this school year, we found that students who participated in an athletic program, a club, or co-curricular met the district expectation of 80%, with 81% of students earning zero-to-one office referrals. Because we believe that participation and engagement positively affects school behavior and creates a sense of belonging, we will continue to strive for increased opportunities for students and increased participation, and work hard to ensure that these opportunities are positive ones. Now, I will invite Jen Potter back up to the podium.
You just have to scroll it down there. Going back in time up here.
As you can see, we have an amazing crew of staff, students, and families at the high school. Our ultimate goal is that students are ready and prepared for the next chapter, whether that be the next grade level, graduation, college, military, careers, and beyond. We know that students are more than a number. They're more than a test score, and our staff works hard to provide opportunities for students to be successful in all the opportunities that may come their way. Here are just some of the photos that represent some of the ways that we support and celebrate our staff and students at the West Bend High Schools. As shared this year a little bit earlier in the last presentation, our book study has really helped the staff work to build organizational commitments around creating a positive learning environment for students, committing and recommitting to high expectations for students and staff, and working to develop ourselves as reflective practitioners of the work that we do. As you'll see in those pictures up in the corner, student life and activities really helps drive our sense of belonging, as Ms. Hanks was talking about. Our staff also have a vision for working across content and curriculums, as seen here with the collaboration between our athletic directors and our manufacturing classes to build an awards podium. Our students in that picture below in the middle are working on building their leadership skills within our school, as seen with the student crew members here offering tutoring sessions for our freshmen prior to exam week. And lastly, we love our time-honored history and traditions that make us who we are and remember our roots, as seen here on our last grad walk from June 2. So with that, I say thank you So, with that, I say thank you very much, Board, for having us here tonight. And please let us know if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. It covered a broad variety of topics. So, we'll turn it over to our board members who have questions. I think I saw a hand go up here. Mr. Donaldson.
I do, and it's probably for Mr. Kiso. So, safe and secure. We talked, you talked about the school hallways and stuff. And I have heard reports that there are a number of students, I don't know if it's a group, it's just whoever wants to, but during the beginning hours, when kids are supposed to be reporting to a room, there's reports of kids just wandering the halls, not being held accountable to report to their rooms, not getting, you know, anything written up about it. And it continues to be an issue all year that I got the same report from people. What are you planning on doing this summer to remedy that? I'm hoping you're coming up with a better solution to hold people accountable to the standards that we actually need to hold in the schools.
Yeah. So, when we look at our data, we see a lot of freshmen that have a lot of, that are meeting the expectations. And next year, I'm going to be overseeing the freshmen, East and West, as their Assistant Principal and really going at the expectations that we expect of them and having meetings with them. Because, like I said, we look at the data, and the freshmen have a higher level of referrals and aren't following those expectations as much as some of the older students. So, focusing on that age group, also bringing together a student focus group on safe and secure so that students can give us some input of why they're not feeling safe in the hallways and understanding maybe it's that group that people are talking about that we can focus in on and see how students can help us out by making some action steps to address that. But we, when we have referrals, we do, we call the students in, we hold them accountable, or we teach expectations. And from our teachers' level as well, we teach our teachers to make sure they're working with them at the classroom level with tardies, with skipped classes. And as they work with the students and provide interventions, then they work with us, the office, when it's not working. And then you'll see different punitive measures with other interventions, such as lost privilege, detentions, suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and then possible alternative placement change. But at the same time, we're there to support the students. So, we're reteaching. We're developing check-and-connect where students can check in with a trusted adult that they have and just make that connection so they want to be at school and they want to be in the classroom. Because I think creating a welcoming environment is the basis of why students want to go to class and stay in the class. And we're not going to have a lot of those.
But a welcoming environment and a free-for-alls is two different things.
Yep. There's got to be a definite balance.
From what I've gotten, and this is staff, staff members, I'm not going to give names, but, you know, nothing had changed the whole year. We had had students that wandered the halls, you know, and apparently were not being consistent enough with dishing out the disciplinary actions or writing them up that they're even grasping that this is an issue. This is an issue. We can't just have certain groups of students or certain people just thinking that they're okay to just walk through the hallways whenever they want when they're supposed to be in classrooms. This has to be a structured thing. If we want to, we want to prepare these kids for actual life knowing that they can't go out in the real world after high school and just do whatever the heck they want. You know, they're going to have rules, they're going to have order, they're going to have to go to a job at a certain time. I mean, we're setting these kids up for failure. I mean, honestly.
Agreed.
And we're working on that. We have, we have some plans. As Jared was sharing in that last slide in regards to our overall school data, we have brought together our teams of administrators and counselors to start this year to really dig into the data. One of the things that we've noticed is we don't always get the data. There's sometimes like hearsay, like, oh, hey, there's students over here. It's hard to work off of data that we don't have, so we work off the data we do have. But we're trying to get, we've tried different ways to receive feedback, to get data in different ways than just putting in it as a referral process. Because I think what happens sometimes too is you see a student, you see a student, you're like, well, the student's here again. What's the point? We're trying to put points to that to make sure that we have really solid, accurate data going into next year, too.
Yeah. Well, if the student continues to show up, then I can only attribute it to a lack of disciplinary increase in, you know, in what's happening, you know? Oh, it's a slap on the hand the first time, a warning. You get reeducated on what the process is. The second one needs to be a little bit stricter than what we're giving them. My next, my next point, I would just say, you said something about engaging the students and getting, you know, feedback from them. I guess I would just, I know I've had concerns over something like that of backlash on those students. So, we need to have some kind of, you know, secretive ballot box of sorts they can put something in so those students don't say, this guy, you know, tattled on me, and now we're going to go key your car or something. You know, whatever.
Thank you for that feedback. Appreciate it.
Other questions, comments? I appreciate the discussion around gathering more data. I think anytime when we're talking about, like Mr. Donaldson was mentioning, and you mentioned, Jen, was the idea that you can only work off the data that you have. My words of advice would be, we really, really need to collect it. And I know even in the private sector, when you talk about collecting data, it's work to collect the data. It's work to turn it in and to document it. And so, sometimes, right, we're all busy. So, anything that, anything that we can do to do that, I think is going to arm you folks better. And however, we're able to set up that culture. Just words of advice from one person, but...
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions, thoughts, comments?
I just have a...
Kurt?
Were you surprised? I mean, I forget. I think Susan was showing the slides of employee kind of satisfaction.
Oh, that'd be Zach.
That'd be Zach. Jumping twenty points. So, in certain categories.
Yeah.
So, why did that happen?
Excellent question. I think still unpacking some of those things. I think there is a helpful standpoint, too, with some of the restructuring and things that kind of took place over summer as well in terms of the administrative team and kind of how we came together and what that new structure and things looks like to have a consistent message and thing that's going out. That's part of what was said in there, too. You know, as my supervisor's statements are aligned with their actions, right? Kind of grew a lot there as well. And when you have six, eight people who are kind of all on the same page with how we're moving forward, what our plans are, how we're executing them, things of that nature, it can be helpful then to staff so that no matter kind of who it is that they're having a conversation with or going toward, when we're on the same page, we can give a similar, if not the same, answer and then follow that up with making sure that we act upon what it is that we're saying. So, happy to see the results like that. Certainly, that's one maybe factor in things in there. But still kind of unpacking some of those things as well with our leadership team over summer to figure out, okay, what do we do well? What do we need to continue to do? And then what are some areas, you know, that we can look to make some gains like this for next year?
Yeah. So, I would just say, thanks. It seems now your numbers are getting up to some of our grade school presentations of satisfaction. So, that's just an observation. So, I'm just curious on why. And seems to, what you're doing on that front seems to be working, so thanks.
I think to add to that, and it's kind of going back to John's question before, too, one of the things that we really tried to do was elicit feedback and truly hear that. I mean, I would say our staff probably at the end of the year was like, please stop asking us because it was like overkill. You know, it's like every meeting, we're like, please give us feedback. Please tell us what's going on. Please tell us if there's easier ways to do things that maybe we're not capturing. So, I know in the staff feedback on the behavior management process, we did that at every single staff meeting to really elicit the feedback about how are we, how are we doing? Are we meeting your needs? Are we responding fast enough? Are we doing these things? And, I mean, the answer is no, never. I mean, we want to get better always, but we're looking for that increase and really trying to collect that feedback so we can hear what people need and hear what students need to start moving in that right direction. So, I'm not surprised to see it move in that direction, but I do, I think we all genuinely want to see it move more.
Great.
I'd like to address the star, grade nine and ten slide. Do we have, do we have data? I'm sure it exists where, I don't know where it is, but state averages for grades nine and ten? So, where other schools are falling proficiency level wise?
I don't have that data.
So, star would be normed, a much larger and the millions-normative sample. They don't break it down by state. So, we can give you that, and we can give you the expected benchmark and where kids would, you would want them to be in that. And Tina, who normally does the data piece, she and I are working on kind of an overall end-of-year presentation that makes that a little bit more clear where that norm is. And, you know, that we talk about sometimes percents and percentiles and unpacking that and making that just a little bit more clear where our kids are in relation to those.
Yeah. I'd like to see some comparative data so that we can, so that we can better ascertain whether or not this is a problem completely focused to what we're doing or whether this is a nationwide, in this case, nationwide trend. I think that would help put that into some perspective because obviously some of the numbers seem jarring, but it might be nice to see where that falls across the board. And then also to the ACT section, which is what prompted that question, is seeing how our scores are comparing to state average scores and seeing how our students are faring in the different areas. It would also be nice if we could see some year-over-year data with that over the past maybe three to five years of composites and even broken down by the four areas there. I'd like to be able to see that if possible or at least be directed to where I can find that. It might just be publicly available data somewhere. But, so I don't mean to burden you with any extra work there, but if someone can put something like that together, I would like to see that.
We've got in the works, Tina and I are working on the end-of-year and culminating data points.
Including the ACT stuff.
Mm-hmm. That would be a measure that's included. So, your star, your other benchmarks, Fanta Simpson now, looking at a wide picture of achievement with multiple indicators at each grade level.
Then you've already anticipated my needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't let our athletic directors off without a question. So, my question is a very general one. You heard me talk earlier about the fact that I went out for track and I was terrible. So, it leads me to the question. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. Clearly, many, many great accomplishments, and we've had many, many recognitions just showing that. Let's talk about the ability to participate. I mean, for students. I realized, you know, teams may fill up, but can you just generally describe, if someone wants to go out for a sport, is there room for them in the programs? Can you talk about that? Do we have sufficient access for students to these, to these athletic programs? I have heard zero complaints about this. I'm just curious.
I think one of the most exciting and energizing things about our school is that we just have so many opportunities. I think in one of our presentations, we, early this year, we said there is literally something for everybody. And so, when you break it down with clubs, co-curriculars, our athletic programs, our club sports, we really do offer a wide variety, which I think is really appealing. Our participation numbers, we, that is something that we are always aware of and making sure that we're checking in with those. And like I said in mine, we're just really focused on making sure that our experiences are positive ones. So, when we talk about feedback, we do ask for feedback from, from parents and athletes. We do postseason surveys and end-of-season surveys that give us that kind of information that help us to, you know, like we, like we always do with feedback. What's working? What needs attention? What can we do better? And we also, Erin and I, work really hard to develop relationships with our student athletes so that, you know, they have a comfort level to, you know, approach us or just have conversations with us that we can try to keep them as involved in, in anything as possible. And I also think that really making sure our staff is on board and we're connected and working and offering these types of opportunities because we don't want to take those things for granted. So, we work with a great staff. You know, our advisors, our coaches, you know, they give so much. And we want to just make sure that we, we keep our relationships growing.
I think one other thing to add to is we do have some sports that are cut sports where, you know, there has to be a certain amount, like we can't. But at the same time, I think one thing that we do really well is, let's say, for example, girls volleyball in the fall. It's a very popular sport here in West Bend, and they're often our cuts, but there's often sports that haven't started yet. So, we try to find something for everybody. So, yes, if a student athlete were to get cut from the volleyball team, we try to lead them to maybe tennis, that's a non-cut sport, or, you know, trail sharks, mountain biking, or something, just so that they're not discouraged that they didn't make the team. But we want to have them have opportunities as well.
Great. Thank you. Other questions?
I'm just going to add. You guys, I know you guys made great ground this year with the schools, and obviously your numbers show. So, I just, I will say, you know, congratulations on that. I'm not, I wasn't trying to be like, you know, a complete jerk about the whole thing, but just I think there's other opportunities that we can, we can focus on for sure.
There's always improvement when it comes to student behavior. We welcome any feedback. So, if there are ideas that anybody has, please feel free, email me. And I know it deals with a perception sometimes, and it deals with a reality sometimes, and sometimes it's a middle ground of both. So, we always will, will take any feedback and use it if there's any that you guys have for us.
Appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation, all of you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is seclusion and restraint report, and Emily Melstrand, our Director of Student Services, will walk us through.
All right. Good evening. I am Emily Melstrand. I'm the Director of Student Services. I've had the opportunity to meet all of you, but I just want to make sure that folks at home know who's speaking to them. I am here tonight to do the annual report, which is required by the Department of Public Instruction related to seclusion and restraint. And some of you might remember, we did this report late fall of the current year looking at the previous year's data. And we're, I'm working really hard to align our processes so that they make best sense within the annual calendar. So, this year, we've moved that to June so that we can kind of finish up the year in a seamless way. So, seclusion and restraint is something that we have to talk about. There is statutory framework, the statutory framework for school districts to ensure that we're only using those appropriately and when absolutely, when absolutely necessary. So, seclusion and restraint, I'll go through the definition of those in just a minute, but it's a crisis intervention strategy that we try really hard not to have to use. So, the intention of seclusion and restraint is kind of a last resort. We're trying to keep a student safe because in that moment, they're posing a risk to themselves or they're posing a risk to the safety of other students. The only individuals who are able to utilize this very restrictive intervention are those individuals who are trained using our crisis prevention technique or strategy, which is nonviolent crisis intervention. As I mentioned, it's a last resort. And again, I just want to really emphasize, this is only used when a student's behavior presents a clear imminent risk to the physical safety of that student or other students or staff members.
Emily, can I just interject real quickly? I appreciate that discussion because just, just for the sake of our, sake of our public, these are not techniques that are used for punishment. And you just, can you just emphasize that?
Never used for punishment, absolutely. It really, truly is only used when, when we're afraid a kiddo's going to hurt themselves or somebody else. And I'll get into the data in a minute. But prior to the meeting tonight, I always kind of look over past data just to look at, you know, just to kind of dig down in terms of what's the pattern. And what I really see when I look at our data is this is primarily young elementary kiddos. And you're going to see that the majority of the kids whom we've had to intervene in this manner are also children with disabilities. And very often, it is occurring when a child is, you know, we have little kiddos who are maybe escaping from the building and running out the front door. And we literally have to stop them because you're running into a parking lot or into traffic, or a student who's very upset and potentially going to be engaging in like self-injurious-type behavior, and we need to stop them from doing that. So, I appreciate that you reframed that.
Thank you.
So, seclusion is defined as involuntary confinement in a room or area where the student is physically prevented from leaving. And restraint is a personal restriction that immobilizes And restraint is a personal restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move their torso, legs, arm, or head freely. And those are the statutory definitions. So Wisconsin Act 118 requires this annual report to the school board, looking at the previous year's data. There's three data points that are discussed, and that's the number of incidents total of seclusion or restraint, the number of students that were involved in those, and then we differentiate or kind of drill down to identify how many of those students were students with disabilities. There are specific requirements that we follow when a seclusion or restraint is used. And this is something I think, I've always been proud of the way that our district has managed this in terms of meeting these requirements, but we actually added an extra layer this year. Amy Carver is our Behavior Interventionist. We've had the opportunity to meet her. She's fantastically gifted in supporting teams to help support positive student behavior. But she actually reviews all of our seclusion and restraint data immediately when it comes in. We have kind of a process where it triggers to let us know, oh, there has been a seclusion or restraint. She reviews those individual situations. In the event that it requires follow-up with the team, she does that immediately, and then she's also looking for patterns. So if there's a student that we've had to intervene on more than two times, she's meeting with, generally, it's an IEP team, to help support the introduction of different or new strategies. But these are the required elements when a seclusion or restraint is used. The parent is notified on the day of the event, either by phone, conference, or email. There is a report that is submitted. That report comes immediately to me. It triggers in my email so that I know it's occurred, and it also goes to Amy Carver. And then that same report is given to the parent within three days, and that's the written report. Building administrators and anyone who was involved in that seclusion and restraint are required to debrief the situation. Number one, because we want them always reviewing, have you done all of the less restrictive interventions to prevent us from getting to that point? Are there any changes that need to happen? And then always, you know, debriefing with teachers to make sure that they're okay in this process, too. None of our teachers ever want to have to restrain a student or seclude a student, and we try to be really cognizant of, you know, first and foremost, the impact on that student, and then also the impact on the individuals who are supporting that student. If it is a student who has an IEP, and there are two events within a calendar year, we're required to meet and do a functional behavioral assessment, and then review that IEP and potentially change the behavior intervention plan. And I'm happy to say, again, with that layer of extra support, we've been at 100% in terms of every time that's occurred, we've responded exactly the way that we need to. So this just represents our data on the year. You're going to see incidents coded as seclusion, as restraint, as both, and then the total number, and that's the district-wide data. And then the second table represents the same information, but specific to students with a disability.
Okay, just because I know I was the one that requested that you add that second table, because I have a kiddo with special needs, and so I know we had discussed this previously, but, you know, if he was running out the door, I would want somebody to stop him, you know? And so I think it was important to add that because, you know, when you see those numbers, if you don't know that some of the kids are special needs, that it looks like, wow, we use this a lot. But in that situation, it's often really necessary, so.
Absolutely, and even in those situations, we're still going to try, you know, can, is it a student who can follow verbal directions? Can we position ourselves between them and where there's a dangerous situation and guide them back in? So even in those situations, we're going to try to intervene in different ways, but sometimes, particularly with our really little kids, you have to keep them safe first and foremost. And then the last visual just shows the total number of students involved in one or more incident, incidents, and you can see all students and then students with disabilities. I also want to mention, I know I talked about this the last time that we did this report, but in about two years ago, they, there were some updates in regards to, in the event that there's a school-related arrest, that's also considered a seclusion or restraint because a student is potentially restrained in that situation. So that data is also included in here. But like I said, I think it was 80, actually 93% of these students are students who are in early elementary. So that is our annual report. Do you have any questions for me?
Pause for questions. Any questions?
I have one question.
Who?
There's the column that indicates incident coded as both seclusion and restraint. Would you be able to provide a scenario in which that would apply?
Yep. So that would be a situation, you know, very often that might start with, I have a student who is struggling to regulate their bodies, and I'm thinking about some of our early elementary kids who might be kind of in tantruming. And maybe there's risk to, oh, this is a student who's going to hit their head on something, or they're throwing things, and we need to be careful that other kids aren't hurt. So we, our first goal is, can we get that kiddo out of the space and potentially into a different classroom? And then sometimes what could occur is that student might lose control, and it really becomes, now I'm in a separate room, so I'm secluding them, but now I need to give them a bear hug or hold them for a few minutes because they're really going to hurt themselves. So that's generally our little kids, and even with a restraint, the intention and the law behind that is, you only hold them until they are demonstrating that they're safe. They might not be totally under control at that point, but they're not going to hurt themselves or hurt anybody else. So it's being really cognizant and responsive to, how is that, what are the cues about that student that I know, that I can respond to, to ensure that I'm not doing this for any length of time that extends beyond what's absolutely necessary?
I think to your point, too, having been a special educator myself, the behaviors for the child are not unknown to you. So when you talk about an IEP or having something in place, the parents and family are at the table with you. You're talking through those. You're creating a plan, and oftentimes, you walk through exactly what that would look like and plan for those different scenarios. You might be also teaching parents some techniques that they can use when they're out in the community, let's say grocery shopping or things like that, so there's an aligned response in that. Because I think it could be perceived community-wise, like, oh, this is something we're doing, and I find out later. It's, nope, oftentimes, you're even taking a moment with a child where they're in a manner that's calm and in control and talking through what happens when, and having a really solid plan in place. So again, even in that moment, in a child, as you said, tantruming or something like that, there's a sense of, but I know what's going to happen, and I know this, and this is going to help regulate and get to a next step. So it's not necessarily always an unknown surprise, and you're picking up communication after. You're going in with a plan of service ahead of time.
And I appreciate that description, and I just, I need to clarify, I think I have, but when I use the term tantruming, I want to be really careful because I don't want anyone to believe that a child who is tantruming is going to be held. Absolutely not. The only time that would happen is if I had a little one, and I was afraid they were going to hurt themselves, they were, there was an imminent risk to them or to somebody else, and that's when we would intervene. The one thing I didn't mention relates to that training piece. And we do have five internal trainers, so we have five staff members who have elevated advanced training that allows them to train our staff district-wide. Fiscally, that's a good decision because it's certainly much, much more expensive if we're sending everybody out of house. But it also allows me then to call them in, you know, if I have a team that's really needing extra support, I have these internal trainers, in addition to Amy Carver, where I can say, hey, I really need you to go spend some time with this team above and beyond that training. All of our special education teachers are trained, and we actually train them on a more frequent cycle than is required. All of our district administrators are trained, and we're working towards having all of our student services people trained. We're at about 70% in regards to that. And then there are times where a building administrator will reach out and say, hey, I have a student that, based upon what we know about that student and the plan, poses a higher risk for having this type of difficulty. I would like this regular ed classroom teacher trained, just to ensure that we have those layers in place to support that student if need be.
And the largest...
I didn't mention that.
Yeah, the largest piece of that training is actually de-escalation and verbal and working on that. A small portion and part of your certification is the actual, what would that look like and how do you do that safely? But all of that is geared towards supporting in a manner where you can avoid that situation.
Yep. The focus is always on prevention.
Somebody looking at the raw data, this is probably not something that you necessarily can effectively trend year-over-year because it sounds like the numbers are somewhat low, and it depends, I would imagine, on the individual characteristics of your student population. That being said, it sounds like you're intimately involved in this and aware of every single one. Are there any trends that you've identified that require addressing, or can you comment on that?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and I actually do think about that, and I like to be able to show trend lines that are always going downward in regards to these things. But right, we have different, we have students coming and going from our district all of the time with different types and levels of need. I will say, you know, in comparison to last year, we have about a 30% reduction. And some of that was watching those trends and really looking at the effectiveness of student plans and pulling in Amy Carver and some of our nonviolent crisis trainers, one necessary to really look at, what can we do different, and seeing results from that. So yes, I would love to be able to show a trend line annually that shows that downward trend, but we have to be responsive to kids. We take this really seriously when it happens, and certainly, we have people going into support teams because I never want to have to seclude or restrain a student. And I know our teachers absolutely have that same preference.
Thank you. Other questions, thoughts, comments? We appreciate your report.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next report is our Curriculum Committee report, and Melanie Ergot, our committee chair, will give that report. Melanie?
Okay, so the Curriculum Committee met on June 13th. We, Jill Corbett presented a report on the at-risk programs for the 2022-2023 school year. Students in all the programs did demonstrate success. There's a new programming option named Forward that was presented to be implemented in the 2023-2024 school year. And this was intended for students who do not meet the requirement of a ninth-grade reading level and therefore are not eligible for an alternative current graduate option that we offer. So this will give them a better opportunity moving forward into their adult life. And there are currently 21 to 25 students that are eligible for this program, and it will be before the Board for discussion on June 19th, and then for approval on July 10th. And then Dr. Wimmer presented and discussed proposed changes to the Board policies in the 300 series. The members of the Curriculum Committee reviewed suggested changes, provided input, and we worked to develop definitions and guidelines to support resource selection, and that should be coming to the Policy Committee, which I believe is tomorrow. And then we went over the Curriculum Committee calendar for the upcoming school year, and those will take place on the third Tuesday of each month, from 4:30 to approximately 6:00 p.m., depending on what we have to cover in the boardroom right here at the Education Service Center.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you for your report. Superintendent Wimmer, you have the superintendent's report.
Just to kind of go right along that theme, we did some work in Curriculum Committee, but also part of that was to develop a website around pieces for book selection and all that. We are in receipt of one, and then one came in this afternoon, so two reconsideration forms, one for the book, the 57 bus for use at the middle school, and then also received one today for the kite runner, which both were spoken about during public comments. So we are in receipt of that. We will put that on the website and talk how people can engage in that. We'll reiterate, here's the process, here's how you fill out that form for reconsideration. So again, that form is submitted, and then a very detailed process will follow according to policy. So we will start that on both of those books. And again, if anyone has trouble accessing that form, that's right online. They can contact us. They could contact their principal and just let us know about that. So we'll continue that work, and we'll keep the Board in the loop around the timeline and the process for those reconsideration actions. So people always think that summer is, you know, oh, it's summer, it's a slow part of the year. It's not for us because you're closing out the current year. You see some end-of-year reports, those kinds of things. You're starting, I always call it an interim year. We've started summer school programming, and then you're solidly looking ahead to that year ahead. So we're running kind of three years at one time. Summer school, kindergarten to grade seven, began Tuesday, June 13th. Classes are at Decorah, Green Tree, and Silverbrook. Due to a, you know, Sunday morning main break at the high school, they also started on Tuesday. We delayed that fix so we can make it through graduations. Took Monday to fix. Kids did some orientation activities, and they started in person on Tuesday as well. Just a reminder, we run a second session of summer school, July 31st through August 11th, and also have multiple jumpstart sessions for any student beginning kindergarten, fifth grade, seventh grade, all of those transition pieces. The freshman transition piece comes a little bit closer to the school year. They actually do an early start and do some work, running through their schedules, things of that nature. And for next year, we started kind of that next year planning already, so check out the website. Everyone, it's, what they want to know is the coveted, where's the school supply list? Those are posted, so we'll get those, the picture-taking dates, all of that. We'll get those on a special part of the website. And then also, we'll do a newsletter this Wednesday that lets everyone know exactly where those will find. So all of the individual schools will be in touch with families specifically, but we'll kind of put that as a one-stop. In case you've got multiple students in different schools, we'll make sure that that's there. And you'll see a lot of summer projects, so it's a great time when schools, the kids have exited, to start some of the construction. So you're going to see roofing taking place at Jackson Elementary. There's going to be roofing work at Decorah as well as the high school. In fact, one of the entrances to the high school will be impacted as they're staging supplies and working overhead. A lot of masonry work, specifically at McLean and Badger, and interior painting at Silverbrook and Badger as well. So just getting going on a lot of those big projects, taking advantage of the time when students are out. So that is all that I had.
Great. Questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right, we move then to discussion items. Our first discussion item is stop-loss insurance renewal. Mr. Lenny Hansen, our Director of Human Resources, is already at the podium. Take it away.
This is a topic that comes up this time of year, every year, and we do a couple of meetings about the topic. So this one's very introductory. It's great to explain this once a year because it's one of those things that unless you're living in the nerd world of HR, stop-loss insurance isn't something that you're often thinking about, but it's very important. So as you learn about it, you're reminded as to why it's important to be, have that annual reminder about it. So stop-loss insurance is, we're going to do a brief preview today, and then we'll return to it at our first meeting in July. So we'll do a brief overview of what is stop-loss insurance, talk a little bit about what the market is around that, and then give some projection information and general timeline that we expect to follow as this renewal comes up. So what is stop-loss insurance? And I've used a pretty similar presentation last year because I think it tells a simple story around a somewhat, sometimes complicated topic. So health insurance is that medical side plus what we spend on pharmacy costs for our employees that take the health insurance plan. So medical would be your payments to doctors, hospitals, surgeons for procedures, labs, all tests, all those sorts of things, alongside prescription drug coverage, which we've talked at the podium times before, how prescriptions is becoming a larger and larger portion of your total spend on health insurance. And stop-loss protects the district around costs between both of these items, both medical costs as well as pharmacy costs. So what is stop-loss insurance and why have it? So stop-loss insurance is an insurance protection for the district that kicks in once an individual becomes what we call a high-cost claimant, okay? So a high-cost claimant is someone whose total costs against the health plan hit a certain predetermined threshold that's pretty high, and we'll talk about what that threshold is. Once that individual's costs for the year hit that threshold, all costs above that line are then covered by the stop-loss insurance policy, and the district doesn't cover that cost any further. So it's necessary for self-funded organizations that are our size in particular because we truly pay the claims costs that our employees and their families experience on the health plan. As a self-funded entity, when one of our employees goes to the doctor and might get, the doctor might charge $150 for that visit, that $150 truly comes out of the district's bank account to pay for that visit, okay? So theoretically, without stop-loss insurance, there would be no cap on how much the district could be liable to pay for one individual's healthcare costs. In today's world, where there's extremely expensive medications and procedures that are lifesaving for people, which are great to have at the same time... that are life-saving for people, which are great to have, at the same time, without a stop loss insurance policy, there would be no protection financially for the district against those large costs. Certain conditions that are life-threatening can cost over a million dollars in a single year. The district's total health insurance budget for the entire year is right around $12 million. And we have just over 1,700 people covered on our plan between employees, spouses and children. So as you can see, just a few people experiencing those very high cost conditions could really throw off the entire budget for the entire school district, not just the health insurance budget. So stop loss insurance provides that protection. That cut is at $250,000. So anything under $250,000 for a single individual, the district is going to pay that entire amount out of its funds. But when someone crosses that $250,000 threshold is when the stop loss insurance will pick up from there on out. So when you have one of those million dollar high cost claimants, for example, the district's going to pay the first $250,000 that year. And then the insurance policy, the stop loss insurance policy is going to pick up the other $750,000 in such an example. Having stop loss insurance obviously saves money in those sorts of situations that where you have high cost claimants. And being self-insured still saves the district substantially. We conducted an analysis in the last six months alongside our insurance broker and really found that being self-funded as opposed to a fully funded organization is probably saving the district in the realm of around $2 million per year on its health insurance costs. So it continues to be a good approach, but it's vital to have stop loss insurance in order to maintain that approach. So our current policy is through QBE as the vendor. The cost of that annual policy is there. They do put in place generally in quotes that we get from any stop loss bidder who's quoting on our service, a maximum possible increase that could happen the following year. So it at least gives us some cap on potential increases a year later. Stop loss insurance in our district operates on kind of an odd timeframe and that's just a historical piece. It's from a September to August timeline, which is different from our fiscal year and also different from our plan year, which is January to December. We've looked at options for trying to move that timeline to maybe better align with one of those other calendars. Unfortunately, that becomes very costly because it's an opportunity for the insurance companies usually to build in a little bit more margin, we think. And also, it also is a time where you then have to add months onto the policy, which creates additional longer term risk for the provider. So we've just decided it is simplest and most cost effective to keep those policy dates where they are. So let's talk a little bit about the stop loss insurance market. We have to renew this insurance policy each year. It's a very volatile market. And that's largely driven by the fact that there is more and more life-saving care out there between high cost prescription drugs or high cost procedures. But with that, those great new advances in life-saving care come large price takes. And there are medications out there where a single dose can cost one or even $2 million in some very rare gene therapy type examples. Well, stop loss insurance providers are hedging themselves against that risk that could be incurred by them, which makes the market very volatile. Pharmacy has become in the general market, the biggest driver of stop loss costs. Whereas maybe 10 years ago was more on the medical side. And major medical conditions that individuals on our plan may have can significantly swing what our renewal is each year. So it's unknown really from year to year where that's going to come in because it is dependent on the claims that you experience. So, there we go. So what are our projections? What's a timeline around action around this? So the market norm this year, our insurance brokers told us is about a 20% increase in stop loss insurance. Last year, we were looking at an even larger increase, actually. At first, that's not unusual for the reasons I've already described. Our renewal is expected to be 20% or we're looking at possibly a little bit less, but we're still waiting for the final bids to come in as we bid this out each and every year because it is such a costly product. The biggest thing about stop loss insurance and the reason we bring it forth now is there's a real short timeframe for the renewal. So the bidders on this product will create their bids based on real data that's anonymous, but real data around the types of claims our members on our health plan are having. So each month they get new data, which can cause the original bid to change from month to month. If all of a sudden a new high cost claimant appears on the data for June that wasn't there on May, that could really change what that renewal quote is. So for that reason, it's important for us to be prepared to strike when the right price comes our way. So what we do right now is we talk to you about stop loss, give you a preview because it could be in early July, late July, when that best bid really comes in and we want to be prepared to come to the board right away and be prepared to take action. So I'm not able to tell you today what the exact bid would be, but we would bring it forth as an action item when that bid comes forth. And you've got some background information now so that you'd be able to take action a little bit more swiftly, maybe than we sometimes do on other discussion and action items. That's a big summary of a really exciting topic, I know. But hopefully that gives you the background that you're looking for so that whether it's July 10th's meeting or July 24th's meeting, we're prepared to take action and act swiftly when the time comes. So are there questions about stop loss insurance?
Questions? First of all, let me start by saying there are at least a few of us on the panel here who appreciate some things about insurance. But this is, this is a little bit, a little bit different than our, than our day to day. You talked about the bid, the bid process. I'm assuming we have a, we have a broker that represents us. Can you talk about, is this something we're doing with professional guidance? Is this something we've got experience in and we're doing ourselves? Can you talk about that process?
So the district contracts with an insurance broker that helps us work on all kinds of different products around employee benefit insurance. So you're talking your medical insurance, pharmacy, stop loss, dental, vision, all of those sorts of things. So Willis Towers Watson is the district's health insurance or broker around employee benefits, including stop loss insurance. So they, you know, fight the good fight in the market to pull those bids in. Willis is one of the largest in the world, I think, in terms of brokerages. So they have some negotiating power that a small, you know, district by itself wouldn't have. So we found benefit that way in the past and they're out there collecting bids as we speak.
Thank you. Other questions? I guess one last question, you talked about there could be a narrow timeframe. So when we get the bid, is it something that we may need to consider calling a special board meeting? Or do you think there's enough life in the bid, so to speak, that it would accommodate a regular board meeting?
I spoke to the broker today and we don't anticipate needing to call a special session. So we believe we'll be in decent timeframes given when the board meetings take place in July.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Let's see, on to the next item, which is discussion item regarding the 2022-2023 budget amendment. And Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, will lead us through this topic. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I have two documents that I'm going to be sharing. Both are uploaded in the board packet. The first one is a document that you should be familiar with and follows the same format. Yellow is the beginning and ending fund balance or equity accounts. Green revenues, kind of that orangey salmon is expenses. But additionally, and if you recall back, I have a draft and it's marked as such. And all of the numbers are the same, but they're just organized a little bit different. This is a draft within 15 days of a board approval of a budget amendment. This one is a little bit more formal than that preliminary budget that we'll be talking about in a few moments for next year. So revising this year's budget, 2022-23, from the October budget until now. And this budget publication, again, within, in the paper within 15 days, I anticipate bringing this forward for approval on the 10th. And I just threw a draft, again, estimated publication date on the 14th. We make sure we work with the newspaper. It's a fairly large document that's published. But the reason that I like to show this, and again, it does organize things just a little bit different, but above and beyond that, we even down towards the bottom. And this is very similar to the original budget publication in September, leading into the annual meeting. It still breaks everything out by fund, shows the beginning fund balance, ending fund balance, revenues and expenditures. We also show all of the property tax impact. So the levy itself, and the important part to know with this is that there's no change based on what was approved in October with any of the levies, the mill rate itself, there's no changes there. What this is, is where we had a $10,000 budget for a specific purpose. That spend plan over the course of months sometimes evolves. And we're now amending those budgets and trying to understand where our new dollars expensed, where don't we need to spend money and are there any other areas that we've overexpensed capturing all of that? And interestingly enough, there's only two weeks left of the fiscal year, not uncommon to bring forward a budget amendment at this time of year. But that being said, things will still change. So we're still receiving some final revenue information through into July. We have an estimate for how health insurance is going to end up performing this year, which we will receive final documents on about July 15th or so. So there will still be some things that change, but both documents that are in front of you, whether it's the budget publication or the other document that we'll take a look at now, it's our best estimates at this point in time. I've worked with people for months now to try and capture all the most current information on how that final spend plan is going to land.
Andy, sorry. On the last section there, the proposed property tax levy fund, you have, there's a 0% change. Is that just a rounding number? There's, see, there's a $33,000 difference there actually. Which is about 0.1% only, but still, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't listed as.
I apologize. That is about a $3,000, a $3,000.
There's a $33,000. There's $30,000 on the last budget item as well.
Thank you. I will make sure that that document gets updated. I apologize.
Thanks.
There was no change to any of the levies. Thank you. The budget amendment that's in front of you again is, is beginning balance, ending fund balance, all the revenues and expenditures by fund. I've captured all of the notes and as I'm looking at what happened since October until now, we did have district-wide, there were some unspent dollars. It allowed for some additional flexibility and that's one of the key points that I'm going to be sharing today. We had some positions posted. We had some things unfilled. We had some spend plans, but a large piece of that, and if you recall, we were balancing the this year's budget, the 2022-23 budget and using ESAR dollars. And so for next year, we were originally only planning on having about a million or a little bit less left to be able to use in next year's budget. But those unspent dollars, and I do have some key points that I'd like to make, but those, we still have balanced budgets, but those ESAR dollars get moved forward anywhere that there's unspent areas. One of the large pieces, and you'll notice, and again, I captured in salaries, a few, a few variations on the revenue side within the general fund, but there's about a $2.3 million decrease in the federal sources. That's that ESAR $3 that will be shifted to next year. So we'll have about $3.3 million to use. That helps balance next year's budget. On the expenditure side, we can see some fairly large variances under the salaries and benefits. Those were either unfilled positions or for that matter as well, we did decrease our OPEB or our other post-employment benefits transfer. District-wide, it's about $1.5 million. But again, to provide some flexibility, I've removed those in this amended budget. We have dollars set aside in an equity or a fund balance account for immediate use. But I've pulled that out of this budget to make sure that we have the ability to deliver a balanced budget next year. Other variances with consumables and equipment, and again, those are some of the spend planes, spend plan changes. The inter-fund activity, about $150,000 decrease. That's what goes into Fund 27 to help balance out those activities for our special ed students. But a decrease both in revenues and expenditures of about $1.75 million. Big piece of that though is unfilled staffing as well as that OPEB transfer that we make.
I have a question on that, Asla. Your, I'm just curious about the process. So the federal sources, there's a $2 million decrease in expected revenue from the 8.2 to the 6 million. Was that something that we chose to do after we saw that we had expenditure savings and we rolled it forward or did we have to roll that forward and then we just got lucky and had expenditure savings?
Yeah. So those dollars, we could code expenditures to the ESAR and claim that revenue and end with a surplus. The goal is to make sure that we had at least a balanced budget at year end.
So we could have, we could have claimed it as a surplus.
We could have.
It would have rolled forward to next year then?
Correct.
But we chose to not claim it as a surplus this year and just roll it into next year?
Correct.
So we'll just start with that as not as a rollover, but as just new funds?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we still do need, and again, that's another agenda item in a few moments.
Was that a flexible amount? Like if we would have had, let's say that the salaries line would have budgeted out as expected, would we have been able to just withhold $700,000 instead of rolling it forward? We just would have held $700,000 in that fund?
We would have claimed less dollars again, so depending on where the various accounts.
Okay, I'm just trying to get an idea of which one comes first.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, expenditures, expenditures are, you know, in the private sector widgets. That's what drives our revenues often, so. Fund 21, again, a little bit larger activity than what was originally projected in October, really driven by students at all levels, across all grade levels. A little bit larger activity. There was an increase in fund balance. They have continued to build a fund balance. In next year's budget, I'm projecting that there could potentially be a little bit of a fund balance use. But this year again, raised additional dollars for future use. Fund 27, special education across the board. And again, this does not have an equity account or a fund balance account within Fund 27. It has to balance out every year, but there were decreases of about $230,000, $235,000 from October's budget until now, representative in the large piece there as we take a look at some efficiencies with purchase services that we originally budgeted for that were not needed. And then as well, a few less benefits, again, tied to that OPEB transfer. Fund 29 is Head Start. Little bit of an increase that some additional dollars were captured from October through now. Additional ESAR dollars that were budgeted for about $150,000. We anticipate that there's going to be some carryover at year end that they're not going to use the full $1.68 million. But again, this budget represents the spend plan for our Head Start countywide program. Fund 38 and Fund 39, so this is our non-referendum as well as our referendum. Unchanged for the most part with any of the principal and interest payments. The only thing that's changed, you'll see this across the board, both with the general fund and anywhere that there's been cash flow, positive cash flow, where we have the ability to invest dollars. That interest rate has grown in both of these funds from October until now, much larger interest income that's reflected in the anticipated budget. It is possible that, again, we're done with levying dollars for our debt. Both of these, Fund 38 is a non-referendum, we'll make our final, final, final payment for that next year in next, next fall. However, our referendum debt, we will have dollars set aside for use over the next couple of years. But it is possible that there may be some excess dollars in that fund because of the interest income that's been accumulating just recently even. Three capital expansions. So these are facilities dollars outside of our general fund. Capital expansion, Fund 41. This is again driven by the annual meeting. Dollars are a part of a resolution that are authorized by our voters. So same dollar amount, but again, just a little bit more interest income. We will see a larger expense throughout the building projects that were a part of all the the projects utilized over this last year. We've coded and giving ourselves just a little bit flexibility with the general fund. We've made sure of anything that's allowable within this fund where it's captured now in that $400,000 expense increase. There is fund balance that's still available. Fund 46, capital improvement trust. So these are dollars that have been set aside for a number of years. There's a five-year waiting period that we've exceeded that now. But no anticipated activity on the expenditure side back in October. Nothing has changed. However, now the property tax or the interest income is reflected at $125,000. No expected expenditures though at this point in time. Last one that I always like to show when we sold our Barton Elementary. Fund 49 is where $540,000 are sitting for a future facility use. But no revenues, no expenditures with those dollars.
Sandy, just please remind me, if we have, let's say, a project at one of the schools to fix a roof, it's half a million dollars, making that up. Does that come out of one of these three funds?
It can. We do set aside some dollars in our general fund, but primarily when Mr. Ross comes forward in December, January, asking for permission to begin those projects, this is the large majority of those dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The student gifts fund that you had above there, what uses, what would something that be used for?
Yeah, so that's where students will, their clubs, all of their groups that they have the ability. It has to be a segregated fund. There's actually a governmental accounting standards board resolution that determines how we have to classify those dollars. It's the dollar amount that's sitting there, that million dollars, and let me go back to it. That million dollars that's sitting there, it's getting to be a little bit large. But that's where if they begin raising money for a field trip, a foreign field trip, there may be $100,000 sitting there for that purpose to be expensed at a point in the not-too-distant future. But we've consistently begun seeing those, that equity account or that fund balance account grow. And we, particularly at the high school, that's where a lot of this is. We're starting to understand that a little bit more. So as Ms. Potter and her team came tonight, there's many, many weeks this last year where we are understanding the fees, which there is an amendment in that with how we collect fees for this next school year and how those dollars that have already been collected are going to be used over the next couple of years.
Is that something that could be used for like sports field improvements, things like that? I mean, is that, is that accessible for that?
Yeah. So if the chess club at Badger raised $1,000 and they haven't used it yet, it's sitting in that million dollars. So.
But it's allocated to the chess club?
It's allocated to the chess club, and it continues to roll into the chess club until the chess club uses it. If the chess club decided to say, let's do something with one of the ball diamonds, they could. There are some athletic dollars that are in there, but it's a lot of different clubs and group activities that have raised those dollars.
And who's, and so who's in charge of that?
Yeah. At our lower levels, it's all the principals. And then at the secondary levels, it's our athletic directors as well as the principals. So any group that has dollars set aside, again, we track and understand all of those different groups. I think there's 70 or 80 at the high school, about 30 or so at Badger.
And does that come to you for a budget approval? If someone puts in a request like, hey, we want whatever, in your example, we want 40 new chess boards. Then we need $800. That comes to you for approval then to say, yeah, we'll release these $800 to you from your chess club bucket?
Yeah, great, great question. We have purchasing protocols, processes and procedures for buying items. So there's certain dollar amounts to come to me for approval, $5,000 and greater. Superintendent Wimmer receives items of over $20,000. But generally speaking, we look for two layers of approval for such a purchase at a lower dollar amount. So again, Badger Chess Club, they want to buy some new boards. That would be circulated through the Badger approval process that we have, and they would acquire that.
Okay.
But yeah, not everything.
Trying to get a better idea of what that fund is used for, because obviously it's a.
It's a large dollar.
I think one of the things that might be confusing is it's not one fund, so it's one bucket. But everything underneath has its own segregated line item and all those things. And, you know, my favorite, like you said, they might be orchestra. You know, I think of orchestra where they're fundraising. You might be putting money into this account over years' time for certain purposes. So it might be a long game with some, and it might be a short game with others. It really depends on some of that. And I think that's where Andy works with the site specifically. It's happening at secondary to set that up and examine what and how they're using those funds and doing some accounting work. But it's just set aside.
I think good for student organizations to understand that they have a, potentially that their organization may have a bucket within that line item that they can access for things they may not realize they have access to.
And often, I've seen this in other districts, they get frugal, that they'll do an unbelievable job in raising a few thousand dollars, and then they just don't want to spend it. And you know, it's that group of students at the high school that's there for four years. And, you know, even classes that raise and graduate and try to do something with those dollars to have an impact on their younger classmates and things like that. It's sometimes hard to spend those dollars, but we need to make sure that we understand that.
Thank you. On Fund 49, the beginning balance and the end balance are the same. Is that not in any kind of an interest generating fund?
It is. It's not one of the funds that generates interest income, so that requires that. So at this point in time, we've not allocated.
Could we allocate that? I mean, if it's, if it's been sitting there for, since Barton was sold, we could have been generating 4.5% interest or something conservatively for five years?
Yeah, absolutely.
Kelly?
Yeah, just going back to the gift fund, I was, you made the comment that it's getting a little high. Is that a continued conversation that you have, especially with some of those groups that might be carrying it over year to year to say, let's start looking at needs, and if there's staff turnover, is there sometimes forgotten about money for some of these that could be reminded?
Yeah. So with those fees this year, so we've decreased the ability to just charge students for miscellaneous class items. There's rarely now, so apron, takeable things that they get to take with them and use it somewhere else. But jewelry making, they're not going to be charging a fee anymore, but they probably have a balance, making sure that we understand those. And then coming up with a two-year spend down of those dollars in a good way that'll grow the program and make sure that they're taking care of their students. So I think that's the important part in taking a look at that. And I've already begun to see that at, particularly at the high school where we've been working almost on a weekly basis to understand those dollars and how they can be used. Yeah, thank you.
I'd just say also with regard to the, with regard to the gift fund, which probably didn't think was going to garner this much conversation and interest. No, no, it's okay. I think one of the, one of the good side effects of this is perhaps assurance for our parents that, you know, sometimes clubs, the XYZ club might do a fundraiser, and you wonder, where's that money exactly being stored? It's actually stored through our full accounting and finance system and protocol. And it's balanced and restricted, and, you know, so that's, that's a good thing.
Reconciled every month, reconciled every month, and we keep track of that. Julie Marks in my department, our controller, does a great job with that, works with the schools. Thank you.
No, no, good discussion. Please continue.
Fund 50, so our nutrition services, the meals that we provide to our students and staff. Their budget is fairly consistent with where it was in October. They landed on just about darn near a balanced budget from their expected revenues to their expected expenses. And this is after we came off of the free meals for the previous two years. So Tom Dembski and his team, I know it was a group effort and those that had a hand in that, but really watched the expenditures, made sure that we were tracking those revenues coming in. Increased participation in a couple of schools, we do need to, and you'll see that in the 23-24, and I covered that a couple of weeks ago, that fund balance where it's sitting right now. We do need to spend some of that over the next couple of years. Develop a plan to invest into the program because there are maximum limits within our Fund 50.
Fund 50, is that also one, I noticed there's a fund balance on the bottom. So it's balancing out, and the fund balance, I'm assuming, exists in case we need to pull from there or put into it. But again, I'm just curious, are, who, is there someone managing that money? I mean, I know you're accounting for it, but I mean, you know, just the 1.7 was our starting balance. It's now our ending balance. Even just at a 4.5% money market account, we could have gotten $76,000 additionally added into that this year. I'm just wondering if there's a way we can be more proactive in garnering some interest in some of these accounts.
That is actually the local revenue on the top, the 1.14 million dollars. That actually incorporates the interest income. I just didn't break it out because there are other different local revenues. So I'd be happy to.
But it balances out at the 1.7 million.
Correct.
Fund balance.
So there is interest income that's budgeted, correct.
But the other one didn't have interest in.
Correct. Fund 49 did not.
Okay.
But I've got a note to make sure that we make that adjustment moving forward. There is interest income because for the majority of the year, and because of the size of that fund balance, we do have interest income due to a positive cash flow.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry to hound you about that.
So over the next couple of years, we will be revisiting this fund to make sure that we find a way, whether it's through staffing, quality of the food, or even the equipment within our schools, to make sure that we invest in this program for our students.
I think you've commented on this, Sandy, in the past, that that fund can't grow to 10, 20, 50 million dollars, again hypothetically. There are some restrictions as to, it has to actually be used for.
Yep. Three months.
Nutrition services.
Three months of operational purposes is the maximum allowable. We are not the only school district that's dealing with this size of a fund balance after the two previous years. But that being said, this can only be used on food service. We can't buy textbooks, we can't do a ball field. It has to be used. Now likewise, if they were in the negative, if they actually didn't have fund balance and operated at a deficit, we would be transferring, just like we do with our special education fund, transferring dollars in here to balance out at zero. But they've been a self-sustaining program for a number of years. In fact, I can't remember the last deficit that we've had.
Can that be used to expand the free and reduced lunch program?
I don't have an answer for that, but I'd like to explore that a little bit and get back to you.
Because I know at one point it was, I think during 2020, 2021, it was all-inclusive. There was no restriction for who could be on free and reduced lunch. And then it went back, I believe reverted back to a certain criteria. So it's just something that I was curious if that could be used for that.
Jen, you don't happen to know, do you? I don't. I don't, and I don't want to guess, so. Thank you for asking. Second dollar amount, Fund 73, which is our other post-employment benefit trust. Again, required fund when we have these dollars. Beginning fund balance that we had in October originally had a transfer of about $1.5 million. At this point in time, I've zeroed those dollars out, again, for flexibility. There is fund balance that exists. This is not a permanent or even a multi-year. In fact, you'll see that in a few moments when I present next year's budget, that we've restored some of that. But just this year, to be able to carry over those Esser dollars, we've eliminated it at this point in time. Community Services Fund, which is our Fund 80, anything outside of the typical school day. Very little in the way of changes from October until now. We did have about $200,000 of unspent dollars that were originally levied for the purpose of school liaison officers that did not occur. That those dollars get rolled into fund balance. And then at some point in time, we would be using that fund balance by offsetting the levy, just like we had been for the last several years. So when I came here a little over four years ago, we had a large fund balance. We were decreasing that, offsetting the levy with those dollars. We would plan on doing that again over the next couple of years. Fund 99, which is our cooperative boys hockey program, that's all done, been reconciled. Dollars have to be to the penny. Any surplus goes back to the participating school districts. If there is a surplus, excuse me, if there's a surplus that goes back to the school district. If we have a deficit, we invoice for the remaining difference. But they came out just about on the spot this year. They had a lower-than-expected participation, but solid program offered. For discussion only tonight, again, plan on bringing information forward would be on July 10th. Be incorporating any other discussions, any of the discussion in and that, any amended document a couple of weeks from now. Happy to answer any of the questions.
Any questions? Thank you for entertaining our questions along the way. Like you said, we'll see this back on July 10th.
Thank you.
For action. Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in a little bit for another item.
Yes.
But in the meantime, we've got an action item kind of wedged in between there. High school physical education program and course updates. Mr. Harder, I'm told you are going to present this topic.
How much does Mr. Graff owe you for presenting on his behalf?
Mr. Graff, Dr. Reese, a few other people, so I'm filling in. So this was a presentation that you received last board meeting from our physical education department related to our high school around some course changes that they presented that evening as part of our larger K-12 program analysis piece. So I can answer any questions you have, but because it was presented in front of you, I'm hoping that maybe at a minimum this evening, otherwise 20 bucks a question to Dr. Joe Reese or something like that.
Mr. Harder, Superintendent Wimmer, are there any changes to the proposal as was presented?
No.
Same exact proposal as last time.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any questions then on this action item? Hearing none, I'd move to approve the high school physical education program and course updates as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion in second to approve the physical education program and course updates as presented. Final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I would give you $20 per question. Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's completely okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sarno, we invite you back to the podium for the 2023-2024 initial budget. Welcome back.
I appreciated the break, and I left my water up here accidentally, so. This is a action item this evening. Earlier this month on June 5th, presented a preliminary budget. I would like to point out, and again, same format. We've now updated the 2022-23 recommended budget revision. So pending any changes between now and July 10th. But that blue column has been updated, which it was not two weeks ago. Wanted to make sure that that was pointed out. Focusing on this farthest right column. Interestingly enough, I think this is the first time in about 20, 25 years of education that between when we had this up for discussion until now, there's quite a bit of action that took place last week between Governor Evers' meeting with some key Republicans. The Joint Finance Committee quickly took up some information, approved it. And something significant enough that I did amend this document. So you'll notice that there is a change, there are changes. And it was, like I said, it was significant enough that we wanted to make sure that we reflected that. I have one other document here that I'd like, and it's just really brief. But originally back on the budget timeline. So hold on just one second. I'm sorry. There we go. The Joint Finance Committee, so we're now reflecting what they've approved. It's not final. It has to go through the legislation as well as the line item vetoing with Governor Evers. But the Joint Finance Committee has updated their information, so that's reflective. Originally, I shared some information, and this was back on March 6th. We looked at some variances and taking a look at in 2022-23 versus next year, what's changing on the revenue side. And I wanted to make sure that I had the opportunity to update that because what was supported by the giant Joint Finance Committee is fairly significant. If you recall the graph that we had where the Consumer Price Index is rising faster than the actual increases in the revenue limit, it's significant. So we're considered a low-spending district in the Joint Finance Committee, as well as what was previously discussed with Governor Evers and the key Republicans that were referenced. It's a $1,000 increase in the low-spending threshold. So it goes from $10,000 to $11,000. So it's a $1,000 increase, and we're at about $10,005.62 or something like that. So I wanted, I wanted to reflect what changed as well. We just discussed a change in the Esser dollars that we are using less in the year that we're just ending. We have more for next year. So there's some things that I wanted to just show the net difference, primarily on the revenue side. I tried to stay away from the expenditures. But in this chart are some of the key areas that we have, which are sources, are our revenue areas. What was going on in 2022-23? And these are some key pieces, some key line items in the budget. The March estimate for 23-24, as well as the 23-24 June, I called it the Joint Finance Committee info again, pending. And this is a preliminary budget. Things are going to change. We know that our enrollment's going to change, resignations and rehires and all of those different pieces of information. We know that there's going to be things that change, and it's really to kick off the next school year and start to begin incurring expenses. But right off the bat, we know that there's typically, and we've been having declining enrollment of about $3 million a year. There's two different line items that impact us adversely. The total this year to next year, it changes. It was going to be larger originally because the original revenue limit was low. Now that the $1,000 low-spending threshold is increased, it virtually wipes. Now that the thousand-dollar low-spending threshold is increased, it virtually wipes out, and it really helps us in future years. We do get money next year. There's a sizable dollar amount for next year. But it really helps us a year out, um, with these two-dollar amounts. They've virtually been wiped out for really the 24, 25 school year. So we're even monitoring information out that far. I, I kept all of the information on here, um, originally, um, local gate receipts and fees and things like that, minimal, that's unchanged from March. CISA open enrollment unchanged from March. ESSER 2 and ESSER 3, this is where we did see there is that difference here where originally we thought we were going to have about $976,000 left for next year. Now we have 3.3 million dollars. So we just gained about, um, a little, little over $2 million, 2.4 million dollars that are able to be used for next year and help balance the budget.
So Andy, can you comment on that again, just so, just so I understand it? Because it sounds like good news.
Yep.
Financially.
Yep.
So is that money that we had possession of, that we were able to release? Or is that money that's actually going to be flowing in that is outside of our finances currently?
As many grants, um, um, operate, we have to claim those dollars. So those have been earmarked. They're not a part of any of the, the governmental freezing or anything like that. But those are dollars that have been earmarked for our school district. They're not sitting in our bank account. We have to make sure we code expenses to them, do a claim, which is then when we receive those dollars. But again, we did not need them at this point in time for the current year. We're giving ourselves some flexibility this year, then to make sure that we meet our, our obligations next year. But, uh, that, that certainly indeed helps, um, balance the budget next year.
Thank you.
Yep. Originally, um, I had some E-rate. These were some one-time federal technology dollars. I originally had, uh, $650,000, which was a one-time increase. We've now balanced back down to 350 because we received them this year, which is what also helped us with some of that COVID dollars being available for next year. So, um, um, just balancing out this year, dollars available, and then being able to push off those ESSER dollars for next year. Um, originally, we estimated that our state special education categorical aid was going to be going up by about 5%. The proposal from the Joint Finance Committee is only at about 3.3. And it's not a sum sufficient pot, meaning they said, these are dollars that are set aside. They won't hold true on the percentage. It's the dollars available. So we need to watch that a little bit. But, um, actually a little bit of a decrease based on our earlier estimates of a couple hundred thousand dollars for that, uh, categorical aid. The one big piece that we need to watch for, and again, that low-spending threshold that increased originally, we had a couple hundred dollars, um, for that new revenue, the revenue limit going up by a couple hundred dollars. Now that it's going up by about 995, we went from $190,000 up to about 3.9 million. So when I total out all those variances, it's in, it's new dollars of about 5.5, 5.6 million dollars. But interestingly enough, when we originally looked at this back in March, we're still projecting, because this is just on the revenue side. We're, um, having increases in expenditures, um, staffing wages, um, can, um, utilities, bus company, all of those, those expenses. We're still making budget reductions of over $2 million next year, even though we're using those ESSER dollars. And the state gave us a $995 increase in our funding. Doesn't say where it comes from. But it's an increase in accessibility to dollars. We're still, we still have, um, over $2 million that we're making reductions. So I wanted to just kind of show what that looks like on the revenue side. So it's certainly good news. It does not catch us up from having been frozen for two years with large consumer price indexes that we're dealing with, as well as, um, growing health insurance costs.
So am I looking at this correctly on the other, um, sheet that you had up? 2023, 2024 proposed preliminary budget for discussion. A couple of, maybe the last meeting or the one before that, that number was closer to $8 million there? And now we've reduced it down to $5 million deficit?
I've reduced it down.
And that includes the 5 million that you just showed us there?
Correct. Now, the big piece though, and, and I think there was discussion about this with Mr. Donaldson last time, we're purposefully spending. This is a district-wide, all funds. It is a deficit. But 3 million of it, um, is because we don't have to levy dollars anymore for our debt. Um, I have a couple hundred thousand dollars in our nutrition program, where we said we have to start spending the fund balance. We're going to be using a million dollars of our non-referendum debt equity, because that's going to be done now. So, um, there are some key areas that we, um, are purposefully spending our equity accounts. But when I take a look in just the page that's up right now, our general fund, it's balanced.
Yeah. And that's, and I'm, I'm glad you asked that, because that was my initial reaction too. I don't want to steal your thunder, but just humor me on this. Can you go to the page that has Funds 38 and 39 on them?
Yep. That's, yep.
So Fund 38 shows in the right-handed most column, $986,000. We're spending it down basically to zero.
Yep.
So that's about $900,000 of that red number up on top, because we're just spending it down. And the next one, which is Fund 39, we started at 7.9 million. We're spending it down to 4.9. That's 3 million, correct? Do I, am I reading that right of that comprises that negative number? Am I reading that correctly?
Yep.
So really, it's what you talked about. It's, it's not that we're lacking the revenue. It's that we're spending money that we already have.
Correct.
Kind of in the savings account.
Yep.
Which has to count as an expenditure. But it's not like that, that revenue was recognized in many, many prior years.
We're not, we're not being fiscally irresponsible.
Yeah. But it's a good, I'm, I'm glad you asked the question, because the initial is, if you're looking at the upper right-hand corner, it's like, oh, no. We're, we're, we have a $5 million deficit. And the answer is, no, we actually don't.
Right. It's a good thing.
And that, that's why I wanted to bring that up and clarify, and, and thanks for going even further, because I think people see that and they think, oh, you know, we're operating at this deficit. And it's actually not. We're in a, we're in a, a really nice financial position where we can spend down accounts, because we no longer will have that expense. So.
Yeah. Just, just on this slide alone, as, as Mr. Zogard indicated, there's a million dollars on the top section of our non-referendum debt. That's our final payment. And we'll have $20,000 that we have to understand what we would like to do with it. So that, that can go back, that can go back to the general fund, because it's within the revenue limit. But then Fund 39, this is the referendum-approved debt. We're not levying dollars anymore. The fund balance exists to be able to use, um, between principal and interest over the next couple of years. So yeah, for, 4.3 million dollars, um, of that deficit right off the bat.
Yeah. That's awesome.
Yeah. It's, it's something, it's something to celebrate.
Yeah. Yeah. It's one of those odd, oddities of, of accounting that, you know, when you spend it, even if the money is in savings and you spend it on exactly what you intended to, it technically is an expenditure without a matching revenue.
Yep, exactly.
And it's, it's strange that it looks like we have a $5 million deficit, and the answer is, we don't.
Maybe you should include a savings line up on top for money we had in the savings account that we're using to pay that off.
I'll see how I can code that out or, yeah, a lot of asterisks.
Lay some fears for the community.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, derailed your, your order. Please resume.
That, that's, that's, that's a great point, and, and we would have gotten to that. So again, general fund, um, again, preliminary budget, our best estimate at this point in time. I have restored back, and you'll see particularly under the benefits line item, which is the second orange down, we do have that increase again, because number one, we're projecting health to go up by about 13% at this point in time. It may surprise us and be a little bit less, but we wanted to have it covered. But I've also restored that OPEB, the other post-employment benefit trust, because it's the right thing to do if there's dollars there available. It wasn't going to be a long-term solution, but it's the right thing to do as long as we can still balance the budget. And we've done that. All other expenses at this point in time, as we understand them, have been covered within the general fund. Again, probably the most important area to look. Fund 21, um, and again, I'm estimating, uh, that, that we're even going to have some additional expenditures that I haven't covered. But I wanted to show a little bit of a deficit based on working with that high school staff, and then letting me know that they are going to be spending some of those dollars next year. So that's reflected in the top right under Fund 21 with, uh, the use of that equity account. Fund 27, Special Education in the middle of the page. Again, that's capturing just about everything that we anticipate at this point in time. I think Ms. Melstrand and her team have worked on the budgets, the contracted services, um, making sure that we're operating efficiently. But again, that's, uh, our best estimate, uh, based on the numbers that we've been able to accumulate, um, so far within this fund. Fund 29, Head Start, we've already received our allocation. About the only variable that could impact this now is if there's carryover, where they wouldn't be spending some of the dollars from this year, which is possible. And then we'll reflect that in an updated budget, uh, this fall. Which is why it's also a little bit less. Some of those federal dollars are starting to go away. As was, uh, just shared here a few moments ago, Fund 38, which is our non-referendum debt, um, making the final payment. And then that fund will be done. And that was again, board-approved debt. It wasn't referendum, uh, but entered upon the board through statute that allowed that. Fund 39, referendum debt, purposefully using those dollars, uh, through the next couple of years for principal and interest. We're essentially done levying debt. And in fact, we may have some additional, um, dollars based on where our interest income lands over the next couple of years.
Out of curiosity, what happens if that does run a surplus?
Yeah, so.
And we have more money than we have debt?
Yep.
Could that happen?
I anticipated that, and, uh, you can either, number one, um, under levy, you can take a penalty, um, transfer the dollars into the general fund, $100,000. You can transfer it into the general fund, and then you have to take a one-year penalty on your revenue limit. So it essentially is net neutral. If you have new, um, referendum-approved debt, you can utilize those dollars on that future project. So based on timing and what available dollars are, are there, um, we'll, we'll have to make a decision at some point in time. Yeah. Great question. And again, statute-driven with, with that piece, with that answer. Three capital expansion funds, and again, based on that $995 increase in the revenue limit, I've now restored this dollar amount. 1.8 million dollars was not there two weeks ago. But we've been able to balance the general fund and be able to put those dollars aside, fulfill that promise, uh, to the community to set dollars aside for our facilities. We still are exceeding, um, on the expenditure side, project costs to be able to accomplish, um, the objective of those projects, not put ourselves in a bad position. So I'm utilizing proposed, uh, at this point in time to utilize about 2.5 million dollars, bring this first fund, fund balance down to zero, and just slightly. And last week, I think we were planning on using it about 2.5 million dollars. But slightly use a little bit of Fund 46 dollars. That's the middle area. We had that five-year waiting period. We have the ability to use those. This would be the first time that we would use those. In fact, Superintendent Wimmer, I, we, we wanted to make sure that you understood that, that we would, again, if the cost of all those, uh, projects is where we believe they're going to land, we would need to use a little bit of those dollars that have been set aside again for facilities-related projects. Last dollar amount, uh, here, Fund 49, and again, I will make sure that, uh, next year's budget reflects, um, interest income, and I'll break that out, so we can see that with that half a million dollars now that interest is actually earning. It's worthy of, uh, reconciling that dollar amount. Fund 50, um, I do have, uh, Mr. Dembski and his team spending about $200,000 of fund balance at this point in time, based on their staffing needs, anticipated large food costs, not having any increase. Right now, we've done analysis of our meal prices. And we're, we're probably towards the top end, um, of our region, so holding those flat, but being able to use, uh, some of that fund balance dollars and new investment in the program, some equipment that we know that we need and understanding what that looks like. But we will be developing a plan with the Department of Public Instruction and their nutritional team on how to spend those dollars down and when we need to hit those targets. So not alone in that, it's a good, uh, good thing that we have that available. Last piece, and again, this is where we didn't last week, our Fund 73, which is our OPEB trust, other post-employment benefits, that 1.55 million in the dark green, um, that was not there. We're going to be able to use those dollars, or actually not use those dollars, be able to balance the budget. But now with, uh, the proposal by the Joint Finance Committee, that's been restored. Again, it's kind of the fiscally responsible thing to do. We know that we have a liability that exists. It wasn't going to be a long-term solution, but, uh, we've restored those dollars back. Community Services Fund, um, at this point in time, again, as I'd referenced, we've, uh, um, in- increased our fund balance, our ending fund balance, but using a little bit of that over the next couple of years. And that final piece, we can under levy more, bring that fund balance down to zero. Uh, the, the strategy that I've used in the past is trying to, to make sure that there's no large increases or decreases where possible. But we can certainly get a little bit more aggressive and use some of that fund balance next year. Offset the levy. Last, uh, item, um, we not only have the Ice Bears Hockey, but next year we'll have Rush Lacrosse. We have two sports that are going to be the fiscal agents, um, on behalf of other school districts, as well as our own athletes. But, uh, so that's why we see a little bit of an increase. But Erin Felber and her team, um, and other athletic directors, uh, have, uh, pulled together a budget that reflects both of those sports. They have to, um, balance out or reconcile to zero, but we'll make sure we monitor that moving forward. Any questions? Are there other questions that I can answer?
Kurt?
Maybe it's more of a comment, so this is obviously great news that the state came through with extra funding, that almost $1,000. So it's plugged a lot of gaps. I'm just saying for the, there's a lot of important facts. I'm just trying to sum it up for all laymans listening to. We have 17 million in our general fund. We have roughly 5 million in Fund 41, 46, 49, saved for capital expenditures already. We got 1.8 million that we're allocating out of this coming budget to more capital expenses, if I'm
Correct.
And obviously, and we're offering a balanced budget. With all that savings, I know there's challenges with still inflation, pay increases that we have to do and, but there's a whole heck of a lot of good news for the people that thought the district was in dire financial state six months ago, that we are $8 million short. We're not $8 million short. We're offering a balanced budget and have all these savings. So I just, I couldn't be more pleased with the, the financial kind of picture that at least we're in now compared to, I guess, worst, worst case, what it could have been six months ago.
Correct. Yeah. I, I was surprised where they landed. Um, I did, I did not see that coming, the dollar amount. A lot of other Washington County school districts are in our same boat, that they're low-spending and they're positively impacted by this low-spending increase of $1,000. There's a lot of other districts, though, that you think, oh, somebody else has a $12,000 revenue limit. Well, they're spending all their $12,000 per student. Do they have more disposable income that they can balance their budget better, where they're only going to receive $325 per student? So we should feel a little bit more fortunate. It still does not make up, um, that gap that we've looked at, and I'll maybe in- include that when we come back here in a couple of weeks. It doesn't include that. Um, we're, we're not levying for debt anymore, um, depending on how the state funds this increase. I'm projecting that there's going to be a decrease in the levy, let alone the mill rate. But, uh, we need the final numbers and the final property values and, and some of those other key pieces of information that don't come until October 15th. But, um, there are some other districts that aren't as fortunate as us. But as I shared, we're, we're still making reductions in excess of $2 million. We've used the rhetoric or the term "right sizing the district." We're still doing that. There's still savings that we're, we know that we're going to capture through attrition. We're trying to minimize impact for Lenny, Mr. Hanson and his team in the schools, trying to make sure that we don't have layoffs. But, um, it's, it, it's a little bit better than we originally projected even just two weeks ago. So.
So with regard to the budget, just to satisfy personal curiosity, would it be a fair statement to say that low-spending districts received a bit more lift this time around than non-low-spending districts?
Correct. Yep.
Because that's been in the reverse in some other years.
Yeah. Yeah. Last, last time we saw something like this, it was an extra $100 per year for two years in a row. And I think it was, uh, three or five, it was two annual budgets ago. So, um, but again, frozen for the last two years, large consumer price index. But yeah, a lift is a good analogy, a good term.
June?
So you had warned us in the past that you might come forward and say, you, here's a initial budget, option A, option B, option C. So with this one budget that you're presenting, you must be very confident in what we know today.
Yeah, thank you.
And what the numbers come to.
Thank you for asking. Um, I, you know, the, the politics are the tough thing, um, that, that enter into the equation. So human behavior and how they're going to jockey and, and all that, what's, what's eventually signed into law. I feel comfortable enough, and this isn't the September annual meeting. This is not the final budget in October. We have all of the final information at that point in time to be good. This is the preliminary budget to start spending money, to start receiving money. So it's, I'm, I'm comfortable enough that we made the change to show it. I debated. That was, that was a tough one. But we feel comfortable enough, um, bringing this forward at this point in time.
With that, this is an action item. And thank you, June, for, oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, it is. It is. Yep. I was flash forwarding July 10th. This is an action item.
The preliminary budget, right? That's the next one? No. That's, uh, no, totally fine. In fact, thank you again. You included a different document in Board Docs with that budget timeline. And so, again, this is the preliminary budget. Then we look forward to the annual meeting in September. Then we look forward to something in October, setting the final budget, levy and mill rate. Then in your documents, it says, oh, and then kind of like we are right now, in May- Then in your documents, it says, oh, and then, kind of like we are right now, in May or June of next year, we get to amend it again, possibly. So this is just the first, this is just the first stop.
It's one of the first pieces, yeah. Lot of work that's gone into this, but it's one of the first actionable items.
Any final questions, thoughts or observations? Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the initial budget as presented. Is there a second? Dr. Temez, thank you. Motion and second to approve the initial budget as presented. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you for your work and all the presentations, and more to come.
Absolutely. I appreciate them more than you know, and we'll make sure we stay in touch between now and later this summer.
Great. Thank you, Andy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and our, excuse me. Let me clear my throat, thank you. Let's see. Oh, and our last agenda item, Mr. Donaldson, you asked if this be added to the agenda under action, inappropriate books and concern for age-appropriate material and lack of education value. I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So as we've heard the last couple of weeks, or the last couple of meetings, we've had comments about some of the books that we have in our current use for English or reading clubs or whatever else. But frankly, you know, according to our policy, 361-1 and the AR, bullet point number four, overall appropriateness of material relative to the intended student audience, i.e., relative to the anticipated range of age, skills, cognitive and maturity of the students who are most likely to use this material. It goes on to also say, an extent to which materials are likely actively engaging students and encourage their interest in learning. We can argue some of those are, what materials actively engaging the learning and what kind of learning are we actually promoting here? There's also a bullet point that I would like to argue that we are, it is, I cannot find it now. I do have a note here. It's basically, it's basically the sequence, it's meant to be used in sequence with other things. So in what sequential order are we using these books? In what environment, in what learning environment? What exams or, you know, curriculum portion do we need these books in tandem with to have, you know, to have them accessible for students, especially with some of the 97 F-words in From the Hate, From the Hate You Give, and then the inappropriate depiction of a boy-on-boy rape in The Kite Runner? I mean, these are things that just are completely inappropriate for school-age kids, underage kids, that, you know, parents are beholding their kids to the district as, you know, and trusting, and trusting their, the district to give them the age-appropriate materials and thinking that somebody's on their side, and that's supposed to be us. We're supposed to be on their side to, you know, for the district, for the community, telling them that we're going to make sure that your kids are getting the educational value and materials that they should actually be getting and not smut like this. I mean, this is absolutely smut. So I'm, you know, I can't find anywhere that would say we can't suspend these books if we can come to an agreement as a board. And I think it would be absolutely appropriate for us to do that immediately.
Superintendent Wimmer, I think you mentioned, and Mr. Donaldson is correct, I mean, I think that that policy is the relevant policy, at least in my mind. I see in the AR, there is a public complaint process. Can you talk about that? And has it been invoked?
So we have, in my report, I spoke previously, it's been invoked around two books specifically, The 57 Bus and Kite Runner. The Hate You Give is, there's no form filed as of yet on that book. So that formalizes and starts the reconsideration process that's laid out, and that's what we follow. We have to convene a team, and then you talk about every aspect of that book and where, how it should be available in those pieces. Now, with that said, if people haven't had a chance to watch the Curriculum Committee, I don't want to usurp the work that was done by the Curriculum Committee. One of the issues that we had with that policy language, as it existed, was it wasn't clear. Who determines what's age-appropriate? What does age-appropriate mean? What are some pieces around violence, around sexual content, all of those? We unpacked each one of those definitions, and then actually wanted to move some things into that. So, I mean, that's getting into kind of the policy and how we'd like to see the policy revised coming out of that. That would be up for consideration tomorrow. So this, this would, you're asking for some action to take precedence over that procedure in some way, and that's up to the board to take that, to determine if there's a motion, a second, and some action that the board wants to take. I would say that we should probably look at suspension of policies alongside that because it would conflict with a process on that. So it's just all things for the board to consider, kind of a way forward.
Yeah, I mean, board policies, so in the 100 series, 151 talks about a multi-phase cycle approach to altering board policy or to overriding board policy. And, I mean, I think that that would be, certainly, I agree that you have the right to call for an action, but it seems like that circumvents sort of the process we put into place for all other action items.
Also seems like we didn't follow the policies in the first place to get those books into our curriculum and into our kids' hands.
Well, if you look, I mean, so you're using 361. If you look at 381, controversial material, the last two paragraphs.
These are controversial issues, absolutely.
So the last two paragraphs say, "Parents and guardians should be aware that consistent with this policy, the board's position is that it is neither necessary nor desirable for district educators to attempt to avoid addressing all controversial issues or topics with students. Further, it is not practical for district educators to provide advance notice of every topic or issue that will be covered or discussed in class or other school activity."
Current law prohibits the distribution of pornographic material to students or underage people. I mean, I would say we're breaking the law in this district by distributing some of these books that depict rape scenes that you can vividly see in your mind as you read them or hear them up at the podium. I mean, to argue against this just proves, you know, what you're standing for here, and it's disgusting.
I'm sorry you feel that way. It's not arguing about contents, arguing about choice, parental choice, which is something that I believe strongly in. And these are not required readings. That's the bottom line. I don't know that it's my.
But students still have access to get these books if they're in our schools and in our district, in the library, whatever they want to do, without having to go through any other channels. Because we're allowing them in the schools right now. So they don't have to.
So you want to change the policy on how books are accessed?
No, I want these, I want to make a motion to remove these books or suspend them until we can further look into the appropriateness of these books.
So your decision then is the moral, you're the decider then, for what parents are allowed to have their children access?
For these four books, I guess that's what you're saying, sure. That's what you want to go with?
I'm not saying that, that's what it sounds like you're saying.
Well, you're trying to say that you're, the way you're thinking is better than anybody else's also.
Not at all. I'm just saying that these are, that there's a policy.
You can vote how you want, but I'm not going to argue with you about it here, so.
Just pointing out board policy.
Yep, and I am also. I'm also pointing out board policy that we're continuing to break with these books.
Melanie, maybe to get a chance? It looks like, Melanie, I think you're perhaps reaching for your microphone? No? I was going to ask, I know that you're, that the Policy Committee, sorry, the Curriculum Committee has been doing work on this. And I do see that we've got this process lined out, if there is a complaint regarding instructional resources, how it's advanced for analysis. I mean, I think, I wasn't here when this policy was originally passed. I know there are a number of speakers that talked about, we don't want to have a reputation of book banning. And so I think, what I appreciate about policy is, hopefully, policy is passed when heads are cooler. And it's a good thing for us to follow, as opposed to willy-nilly, say, well, we came up with a policy, but you know what, let's suspend it for right now. But I would like to see this process followed, and I'm assuming we're going to.
The process should be followed. I completely agree with that. And it sounds like the first steps have been initiated.
One point of clarification, John, you mentioned four titles. I have two with reconsideration forms. One, I can only make the assumption it's The Hate You Give that you referenced. What's the fourth title?
The other book that was mentioned in here with the excessive amounts of ass and shit being used, along with the F-word, Dear Martin.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, we're asking our students to follow a handbook that basically asks them to use appropriate language within our school. And then we can, we tell them, completely abandon those when we want you to read these books. What kind of double standard and freaking confusion are we trying to push off on these kids? How can we ever ask them to engage in an orderly process in our school district if we're completely telling them to abandon one thing just because the next assignment comes along? Who cares about those rules? Follow these rules now.
I'm not sure what we're teaching them by skipping due process either. There's a process in place to do this, and if ultimately that's.
There was, and we didn't follow it to get them in. That's my point.
That predates me, I don't know what happened with that.
Me too. But right now, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure that we're remedying the situation that we have, we are put in right now by trying to get, trying to make things right and gain the trust back of the community by making sure we're giving age-appropriate materials to their students, which I can say we're not.
So Mr. Donaldson, it sounds like you were planning to make a motion? Do you care to make the motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the use effective immediately of the four books, The 57 Bus, The Kite Runner, From the Hate You Give, and Dear Martin.
Is there a second?
I will second it because I, listening to the public comment and hearing that, it is, it's hard for me to even move forward after some of that comment. The way that everybody else can just jump right into the next part of the agenda, it's like, wow, how does everybody not feel how awful those are, that kids are reading that here? So I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and second on the floor. We'll open it up for discussion. Melanie, I agree. You know, the fact that I, the fact that I move on to the next item is not for lack of caring at all. But I am a believer in the process, which we pass when cooler heads prevail. And it really does look like this process is supposed to address, and it looks like what we're supposed to do. And Mr. Donaldson, I understand your point that, you know, perhaps process wasn't followed in the beginning, but I don't think it would make the board any greater. In fact, I think it would be lesser if we said, well, we'll meet that if there was a lack of process with another lack of process. So for that, for that reason, I'm planning to vote no on this, but not because I necessarily like the books, but because I want to see the process followed. The last thing I want to do is have this board, this board accuse of book banning.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable moving forward with the process as well, and I'm happy to, you know, take community input on that as well. But I don't think this is the process I would want to do, the current action.
Other thoughts? Melanie?
Is there a way we could, like, just put things on hold as, you know, if somebody brings up a challenge to a book, like particularly, like The Kite Runner or The 57 Bus, somebody's already challenged that, is there a way we can, like, put that on hold until a review has been done before, like, making it available to students?
What's nice is we have a natural hold of it being summer, and they're not used, so they are technically not accessible. We spoke to The 57 Bus, how, you know, that wasn't accessible after the book circles and that piece. So I think right now, the process and how it's laid out and the timelines we have to adhere to hit that naturally without me having to go take things off a shelf, per se.
Sure. Do we know, I know you had mentioned that you would, like, mention the timeline for this book process? Like, would that be done before school would start in the fall? Or like, what is the time, you know, that that would be?
We already have some holds on our calendar, I just can't speak to them right now. Because it has to take place in a timely manner. You can't, you can't use it to delay and extend and all of that. But I think that what you need to look back on, because again, we kind of have that naturally, but maybe something for reconsideration by your committee, is looking at that process again, and do you want some kind of intermediate step placed in there?
Mr. Harder?
Melanie, to answer your question about timeframe, when the AR has listed out that the first complaint goes to the site principal, typically could be a verbal, an email, whatever else. That principal has seven days to respond to the person asking for reconsideration. If they turn in that form then, after they get a response from their principal, we have 30 days as a school district to respond to that reconsideration. So actually, Dr. Reese, myself, Ms. Wimmer and I, we're talking today about the process for the first one that we received, which is The 57 Bus. We're hoping to set up the first initial meeting with that, kick that off, talk about the expectations, then whoever that team is has to read the entire work. So we need to give a, you know, a week or two for that to happen, and then come back and process those different pieces. But by that AR, we are bound by 30 business days to complete that.
Okay, thank you.
Any question and clarification? Other thoughts? Kurt?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on this. I'm the, I gave a speech on swearing when I thought schools should be a swear-free zone, actually. So I'm reliving my 18-year-old youth, and I found some of the language offensive on the swearing and inappropriate content. That's just me, I'm a little old-school like that. So I don't, I've heard enough, and if there's a policy, I'm in favor of taking these two books out of our school district even right now. So I will be voting for the motion.
Great, thank you, Kurt. Other discussion thoughts? Kelly?
I'm having a hard time. I completely understand that there's offensive and people, but I just, it's so hard to speak for the general public. One person might be so offended because it's, they lived it, and it brings up, but there might be another person who is living this and feels that someone's hearing them. And who are we to decide this? And one thing, I would love to go through the process, and I am not against in the future getting rid of these, but I definitely want to follow the policy because I can't decide for an entire school district, an entire community, based on one night and a few weeks of hearing things.
Thank you. Other discussion comments?
I'm in favor of following the current processes we have in place. But I also remember a few meetings ago, we talked about some book, book clubs to read some of these books, divvying them up and reviewing them that way. So I don't know if anything came of that particular idea.
Sure, we can speak to that. So at the Curriculum Committee, we talked about, our current process was just giving the title and kind of putting the onus on the families. So we had talked about, Melanie and I even talked about today, just kind of a real, you know, key attention piece to families. No rating system is going to be perfect, but part that Mr. Harder was talking about was making sure all of our families are trained and have multiple different review areas, not just your Amazon reviews, things like that, that they could seek and learn, but also that we would take on the onus of putting that explanation by those titles and some of those pieces by that, so that families, it was right in front of them, and they knew and understood and would sign off on that. And that was a piece, you know, and that was one of those, as we talk throughout the county around this, we were saying, okay, how do we collectively do that? Because some of our titles might overlap, how do we kind of put that together? And one piece that we talked about at Curriculum was putting together a timeline of how that review would occur, so that we are opening our doors, secure in the knowledge that that, all of that took place prior to, you know, textbooks and book choice in front of kids. And then, while we were confident in being able to do that, making sure that we had that parsed out, that if it needed to extend beyond when school started in fall, that it was before anything happened. So, you know, at least maybe we're clearing half of the year, and then we keep working on it, so that it's there and in front of families. We also talked about the website updates that would give people that access all the time, and our community access to what's in our libraries as well, so that it was transparent. And again, we were taking some of that burden from families and being really clear about what it is, what it isn't, what the purpose was. And then talking about relooking at those lists so that they weren't weighted so heavily with those titles, that there were really a true range of options that met families' needs in any of those materials.
I just want to say too, I'm not, I have not read all of these books, so I don't feel comfortable necessarily speaking on the entirety of the book based on selected excerpts. And while I understand those excerpts certainly have some inappropriate or some controversial topics to them, I don't know what the redemptive values of these books are in its entirety, in its sum. And some people will look at one small section and throw the whole thing out based solely on that. But there are, you know, certainly some books that have controversial issues as parts of the books and have significant redemptive value. I mean, that's why I want the process to be followed in its entirety and not jump to a conclusion and make a vote on something I haven't even read in its entirety myself, and remove potential parental choice from parents who feel they're happy or are, you know, are glad that their kids have access to a diverse selection of books. You know, I mean, and I'm. You know, I mean, and I'm, just as an example, I mean, there are certainly other books that I'm, that have incredible stories of redemption that have topics, including the ones that we're talking about today. There's stoning in the Bible, you know, and that's an incredible story of redemption, you know? To throw that entire book out because of its depiction of stoning would be silly to me, because, you know, it's an incredible story of redemption. And so the redemptive value in its sum may outweigh the controversial blurbs that, that are in there. That's, and that's why I want the process to be followed, that's why that's what I'm in favor of, is because I don't have all of that information about that book, and I don't want to blindly make that decision, when there's a process in place.
Yeah, I've heard some, and I appreciate the individuals of the public that have brought forward, you know, varying perspectives on this. And I have to say, sometimes look at these, you know, I, I hear this and view the validity, perhaps, of these materials with a bit of skepticism, but I think that's exactly why this process exists, so that we can explore it. And regardless, I'm in favor of the process, but I appreciate the fact that we approach this with different perspectives. Is there any other comment or question before we will call the motion? Mr. Donaldson, I just want to be sure I have this right, so the motion would be to suspend the four books you mentioned, correct? Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to be sure. So we have a motion and second on the floor to suspend the four books. Final discussion. I'm going to call the roll on this one, just so we have this clear for the record. Dr. Temez?
No.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
No.
Ms. Kruger?
No.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Swigerfoltz, no. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Talley, it's four noes, three yeses, that motion does not pass, but I appreciate you bringing it up. And I think superintendent, obviously, we have great interest in next steps as it relates to the process.
Yeah, just hearing the, the discussion tonight, again, because we're in summer, the books are not available, the process will be in a timely manner, but I think, to our point around what board authority exists, around that immediate kind of pulling out when something's being questioned, I think that's a piece that should be revisited. I can't put it on tomorrow's policy agenda to look at that, but I'll bring that forward in future policy and curriculum committee, because I, I think that's a piece that's creating a, a conflict with the process that we've got right now, is what is that immediate path that we might be able to build into process?
Okay, that's a good add.
And, and I guess I'll just add, so we're, you guys all just agreed that we're going to follow this process, and, and I guess in, in, in the grand scheme of things, we are not following process according to 165 and 511 with Dr. Temez and, and Ms. Lang on the policy committees that directly reflect family members or, you know, or themselves, that could possibly potentially be a conflict of interest and a nepotism issue on the, on the committees. So I would like that addressed also, if we're moving forward, that is-
I, I would take that and put that when he calls for future consideration.
Hold that, hold that thought just for a second, John.
Just hold that thought right there for that piece in the lineup.
Just so we go in correct order, so we aren't accused of not following our agenda. Next is future agenda items in our board meeting calendar. So as discussed, our policy committee meets tomorrow, June 20th and June 27th, 4:00 p.m. Education Service Center. We have regular board meetings on July 10 and 24, 5:30 p.m. Education Service Center, and a curriculum committee meeting kind of sandwiched in between there on July 18th, Education Service Center at 4:30 p.m. If I have that right. Any questions on the board calendar? All right, items for follow-up and communication. Superintendent Wimmer, Mr. Donaldson had an item for follow-up and communication?
Yes, we're starting to speak around 165 and 511.
Yep, conflict of interest and nepotism policies, and make sure that we're at least following those when regards to board members that have family members in the district as well. I think we are not following them, and if we are going to be honest and want to follow these policies to a T like this, then I think we need to look at these and make sure that we are following them in this aspect also.
That is on the agenda for tomorrow's policy committee, we'll be able to talk about that right away.
Great. Other items for follow-up and communication. I had noted a couple of requests for, on the high school reports, some historical data. I think, Dr. Temez, you had mentioned that kind of year over year. Also, there was a question on free and reduced lunch, and maybe there are others. Have I missed other items? All right. We've reached the end of our planned agenda. We have an item that is appropriate to discuss in executive session. So I have moved to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any in public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and takes any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, employment and compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Temez, thank you for the second. Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Final discussion. For this, I will call the roll. Ms. Lang?
Yes.